Good evening. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on March 17th, 2025. Happy St. Patrick's Day. I'm Select Board Chair Steve DeCoursey. Joining me tonight.
Eric Helmoth.
Diane Mahan.
Leonard Diggins.
James Feeney, Town Manager.
Michael Cunningham, Town Council.
Ashen Barbour, Administrator.
Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, consistent with provisions in state law for remote participation in public meetings. Before we begin, please note the following. The meeting is being conducted in the Select Board chambers and over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcasted on ACMI. People wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. People participating either in person or by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, we ask you to provide your full name and place of residence in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website, specifically the Select Board agendas and meetings minutes page. If technical difficulties sever the remote connection to one or more participants and efforts to reconnect within a reasonable period of time fail, the in-person meeting will continue at the discretion of the chair, provided that a quorum of the board is physically present. Zoom participants are encouraged to retain the phone number provided in their confirmation email for a backup audio connection to the meeting. There will be opportunities for public comment tonight during the Warren article hearings later in the meeting. If you are attending by Zoom and want to participate, please raise your hand when I ask if any members of the public wish to be heard on a particular article. We have 11 items with subparts on our agenda tonight. Let's see how much of the town's business we can get done this evening. And before I move on to the consent agenda, on March 8th, 2025, the town's payroll manager, Connie Russell, passed away. Her funeral was last week, and Connie had gone to Arlington High, worked for the town for a long period of time, and those of us who knew Connie, she's one of the nicest people you ever want to meet. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Connie before we begin the meeting. Thank you. Now, moving on to the consent agenda. Item two, reappointments to the Elderly and Disabled Tax Relief Committee, Michael Quinn and Jim Munze. Item three, banner design update for Arlington's 250th commemoration. Item four, acceptance of the Boston MPO Community Connections Grant. Item five, approval of the Arlington-Newton Memorandum of Agreement for MPO Community Connections Grant. Item six, confirmation vote to affirm a license that was first granted in 1972 to the owner of 125 Broadway. Turn to board members. Mr. Helmoth?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval, and I'd just like to note, in my motion is the very newest for item three, the very newest design for the Arlington 250th that is on our tables, but also I see has been updated in the public's view as well, and I think that new designer is just fine.
Thank you, Mr. Helmoth. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll second that, and I'll comment on the Community Connections Grant, and I thank Mr. Alessi for the work that he did to get that grant. He won high demand, you know, that I hear a lot, especially from the kids, you know, more bike racks, and so this grant is going to give us more bike racks, and Arlington's very good about getting the queue, you know, there's money to be had at times, you know, and we're really very good, especially with the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, of being in the queue to receive those funds, so happy to see this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins, for the comment. Okay, so the motion for approval by Mr. Helmoth, seconded by Mr. Diggins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it is a unanimous vote. Now, on to item seven for approval, package store license DBA name change. This is Rashani, One Enterprise DBA Mass Ave Wine and Spirits at 137 Mass Ave. The applicant was not with us last time. I believe he is with us by Zoom tonight.
That's correct. I'm just trying to promote the candidates.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you? Yeah, if you could just tell us, this is just a name change, I believe. You've been in business at 137 Mass Ave, but if you can just tell us a little bit about the application, and then we'll take a vote.
So, that used to be Giles Wine and Spirit. The, what we bought it from Sean Galvin, and he let me use for last five years, four years, and he told me to change it for any name. Then we chose the Mass Ave Wine and Spirit, and thus we applied for that. That's it, nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Turn to board members. Questions, motions? Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. B. Swas, and I apologize if I didn't say your name correctly.
Yes.
Okay. I do appreciate that you put this in, and just moving forward, I know this took about two years to come about. The board is very good about making sure, especially with our alcohol and other licenses, that we conform with all the laws that we have to, which you also have to, and one of the reasons is also for the owner, our manager's protection. If in the past two years, because I used to work there, and we have a few attorneys and people who work in the State House, et cetera, on the board, if someone came in from the Alcohol Beverage Commission, the ABCC, and you didn't have the proper license, meaning the proper name on it, you could have been closed down, so, as well as, just moving forward, I just say this as moving forward, that you endeavor to do your best and not have a two-year delay on anything again.
Okay. Sorry for that.
Well, it is what it is. Just moving forward.
Yes.
And, you know, I'm not saying it has to be to the minute, but, you know, let's see when we come around this year, at the end of the year, in December of 2025, maybe the end of October, beginning of November, you could kind of get thinking to make sure everything that goes in for that next-year license.
Yes. Thank you very much, yes.
Okay, and I apologize, but I say it as much as for the benefit of this board and us upholding what we need to do on this side of the table, but also for you, moving forward.
Yes.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move approval for the name change from Giles to Mass Ave Wine and Spirits.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Second? Thank you, Mr. Helmoth. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none on a motion for approval of the name change made by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Helmoth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is a unanimous vote. Now, moving on to traffic rules and orders and other business. Item eight is an update on Park Avenue by Mr. Feeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the board for allowing me to take just a few quick minutes this evening to update you on the progress and allow me the opportunity to say thanks to a number of folks for some of the work they've done today. I want to thank, obviously, our Transportation Advisory Committee for rapidly deploying orange flags, especially at the Oakland at Park crossing, and we're looking proactively at some other crossings along that corridor for the same treatment. I want to give my thanks to the Arlington Police Department for recently installing a radar feedback sign that is there, obviously alerting motorists of their speed, but also doing additional data collection for us to inform later design plans. Want to thank the DPW Highway Division. They were out last week installing additional high-vis neon-green-yellow crossing signs. The main treatment that we were going for, for enhanced visibility, was providing for what we call double siding of existing signs along the corridor, so where there was an existing sign post, adding one on both sides, so that as you approach a crossing, you'd see something on both, in that case, on the east and west side of the road. I will just note that where existing signage is placed on utility poles, it is no longer our practice to post any signs on utility poles, because they are not ours and it conflicts with service, so in those instances, what we'd be looking at is the installation of additional sign poles in the future. I'm also happy to report that I know this board had approved sort of a new advisory speed limit, and we went through the Mass Department of Transportation to have the special speed regulations rescinded. We are in receipt, we ordered a number of signs. There's going to be a full array along the Park Ave corridor. We are in receipt of those signs, and I would expect installation to begin the next couple of weeks. The ground is almost fully thawed to be able to install the post down into the ground, so that is a forthcoming improvement that you could expect in a couple of weeks, and then finally, you'll notice in the reference material, working with the board administrator, was able to include a letter from the neighborhood, especially along the Park Ave corridor, thanking the police department for their increased presence, really day after day, and I just want to, again, thank the entirety of the police department for their dedication to traffic safety and enforcement, and I will note that, you know, we just got, in the beginning of March, the numbers for February, and when comparing February of '25 to February of '24, sort of traffic citations are up, you know, 250%. So, really, a concerted effort across the department to enhance safety and quality of life in the community. And then finally, looking ahead to the longer term, I want to take this opportunity to let the public know that we do our, we are planning a public forum here at Town Hall on March 31st at 6:30 PM to review some of the preliminary design concepts that have been developed, really as quickly as possible, by StanTech, our traffic engineering consultant for the corridor. They've got some design plans to present for the sort of three key intersections along the way, to help get public input and feedback now, to really hone in on what the desired and preferred concept would be, to be bringing before this board for approval in the future. So, thank you for the opportunity to provide the update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Feeney. Any, Mr. Helmoth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Feeney, and not only for this proactive report, which I really appreciate, and I know that the community will appreciate, but for your leadership and responsiveness. I think that I've seen over and over again that, as we have had some really bad news over the last year or so with an increase, increase in pedestrian and car collisions, that you've been proactive. You've, certainly, we've all been responsive, but you've really, I think, taken the responsibility to coordinate a town response that, and you're great to credit your team, because they are a fantastic team, but I want to recognize that it's not easy to prioritize something new, and, you know, I appreciate that you worked with the capital planning committee and, you know, found money to do this longer-range study, and have given the board good advice and made some good decisions about what makes sense short-term, and I know that work is continuing. And, you know, we can't do everything we'd like to do at every intersection that could have safety concerns, but I think this is a good, clear response to a growing increase in problems that we've had in the corridor, and, you know, I'm really, just speaking for myself, really happy to be working with you and your team to do what we can to make this safer.
Thank you, Mr. Helmoth. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I have seen some town notifications about the meeting on March 31st, and we're certainly is getting out for that, and I do appreciate coordinating that, leading up to it and actually having it that night. I do have a few questions that have been brought to my attention, where I've said to people, pretty sure I know what the answer, this is what I think it is, but I want to, you know, make sure, so if I could through you, and whether you can answer or it goes on. One of the questions that's come up a lot, sort of starting with the manager's report regarding enforcement, and how the enforcement has gone from '24 to '25, I've heard probably over 20 times people saying, you know, if the town of Arlington just raised our fines to something much higher, tenfold, twentyfold, that that would be a proactive step that would really perhaps give the drivers cause to pause, to which I said that I'm not sure that it is the Select Board's purview in setting these traffic fine rates. I think it's covered under state law, and the state dictates what the rates need to be, so we have to abide by that. I was just, I want to make sure if I'm giving that information out correctly, that...
Mr. Feeney or Attorney Cunningham?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. While I am no expert, I do know at least a good number of the fines are statutorily defined.
Okay, so just...
Yeah, and I think for the moving violations, that is defined by state law.
Okay, so, and you'll probably, and I don't know if Attorney Cunningham...
Yeah, Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the extent that Mrs. Mahan raises a great point, I can answer those questions and provide some clarification. I just would want to look at it before doing so.
Sure.
If you could, perhaps, in preparation for the March 31st meeting, and then after that meeting, I'd love to see an answer to that question. And then the other two questions that I've gotten a lot for, a lot of questions about, one is what the cost and process is, and I say this again for the March 31st meeting, because I know you'll probably be hearing it, the cost and process for installing the flashing pedestrian crossing lights, like we have up at the Arlington Reservoir in East Arlington. It's been quoted to me $10,000, $20,000, $50,000. I think, and what I've said to people is, I'm not sure of the exact cost, I'll look into it, but I also know there's a process. People had asked, you know, do we need to go to a consultant for each and every one of these, pay consultant, and add the six, 12 months to that? And I told them that I didn't think that was necessarily the case, but that I would look into it. So, I don't know if that's something you can answer tonight, or if you want to wait and answer that on March 31st, but that came up a lot.
Mr. Feeney?
Happy to speak to that, at least briefly. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. So, what you're referring to is called a rectangular rapid-flash beacon, and there are a number of different permutations for how those are deployed, but, you know, an average installation cost of, you know, purchasing the equipment, hiring a contractor to install it, and for doing the necessary excavation to put the large footing underground is probably for an order of magnitude between $60,000 and $75,000. A lot of times, the engineering cost associated with that is making sure that it has the appropriate sightlines, that it's placed in the right location, that you have to do a fairly diligent underground utility analysis to make sure there's no conflicts with respect to the, sort of, the pier or footing that has to go in to support the sign, but also to evaluate and understand, is it the appropriate treatment at that crossing, or is there some other treatment that should be considered in terms of the various treatments that are recommended for pedestrian crossing safety?
Thank you, and just for that night, and when we get information afterwards, when people have asked about the process, they've said to me, is that something we request the Select Board? Is that something we request Transportation Advisory, Town Manager, et cetera? So, moving forward, just, we can outline what that process is. And then the last point, and please don't take these questions as anything, that I'm just trying to educate myself, because we've gotten a lot of these, and I know, I know you all have probably already gotten them too. The last question that I've gotten, a lot of questions, query I've gotten a lot of questions about, and I try not to give an answer to say, well, it's really not a town responsibility. So, I see, I'm saying to people, it's a joint responsibility. A lot of questions around the crossing guards, there used to be one there before, but I think it was an intersection before, you know, asking if we, the board, the town, can place crossing guards here and/or other places, and what I've said is, A, it's a shared responsibility, but the number of crossguards and where they're placed, the last time I checked, it was determined by our colleagues on the school committee, and Dr. Holm and the superintendent, and that the other thing that I've been letting people know, and something that going forward, I think we need to work on, is that the town has been, in my understanding, stepping up with the crossing guard details, because, not unique to Arlington, but many cities and towns are having extremely difficult job, time filling those jobs, and I think if you check with the police chief, we're filling anywhere from two, three, sometimes four a day of designated crossing guard sites, as determined by the school committee, that our Arlington Patrol Women and Men and Traffic Unit are covering. But I don't know if the chair, in concert with your counterpart on school committee, or the town manager, consultation with the superintendent, because this has been probably two years now that we really, just from me outside looking at it, paying attention, aren't having a lot of luck with the crossing guard positions being filled, so I don't know how that gets addressed. I did not watch the school committee presentation the other night by Dr. Holm, and a 7.3% increase request, I'm told, for the upcoming budget, which does not include healthcare costs, so don't even, but, so moving forward, if, I do have a memory that Mr. Schlickman is aware of this, I've seen him comment on it, but if, after, I'm sure you'll get this question March 31st about crossing guard, if I and my colleagues could also get the follow-up answer to that. And again, please don't, I do appreciate everything this town manager and department heads and the chair have been doing, all the way back to, and I apologize, I may get her name wrong, but I think when Linda Cohn, a Park Ave Congregational Church member, unfortunately, was struck in a pedestrian crosswalk, and I believe she, she worked for Arlington Public Schools, or worked for the town for many, many years, I believe she's still dealing with the ramifications of that hit by a car moving forward, and that was under a previous town manager and other, and not to cast aspersions or anything like that, but one of the reasons I had such great difficulty not just giving all five out of fives to the town manager, Mr. Feeney, because I could, but then he has nothing to aspire to, but one of them is how proactive, and you use that word a lot, but to me, he goes beyond proactive and doesn't place limitations that we and the finances have placed upon him, which is, he's really working under a very limited budget, but has somehow found a way with Capital Planning Committee and others to do the best we can to respond to this within the purview of financial decisions that we're bound by. So, I do appreciate everything that you and the chair have kept us up to speed on this, and as Mr. Helmoth said, there's a lot more we'd like to do. We'd like to do everything, but we can't, but you know what? We can keep trying to do everything as much as we can, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, and on that last point, I will follow up with Mr. Feeney, and either he and the superintendent, or I'll reach out to Mr. Schlickman for some information by the 31st. Mr. Diggins?
I talked with the town manager a fair amount about transportation issues, so I'm good for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, no, I want to thank Mr. Feeney again for the update, and I had received feedback about the police and the work that they're doing along Park Ave, and the fact that the neighbors in the town, for that matter, really appreciate that additional work, because it's such, it's a difficult corridor, and appreciate the work of the Transportation Advisory Committee, and I think what we're seeing too, this is an example in that location, I think we're going to see it in other locations, that Mr. Stubbe is going to be coming to more meetings, we're going to get more updates, so we're going to have a better handle as to what's going on as a, as a board, and I think there's going to be more feedback to Transportation Advisory from us as well, which is, which is a good thing, because it's so important. So, thank you for that update, and with that, I will move on to item nine, a statement of interest in the MSBA's Accelerated Repair Program. Alex McGee, our Deputy Town Manager and Finance Director, and Talia Fox will be presenting this evening. I know this has to do with the Hardy School, and with that, I will turn it over to both of you.
Great, thank you. I think we have a presentation today. Thank you to members of the board for hearing us. So, we are here to request that the board authorize the superintendent of schools to apply for a statement of interest with the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program as part of their new heat pumps focus, which is very exciting, and this would be for the Hardy School. Next slide, please. So, as this board knows, we have a goal of net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050, and in order to achieve that goal, we have to electrify all of our buildings, and that includes our schools. The school committee and this board adopted a decarbonization roadmap this past December, and in that roadmap, we have a goal of electrifying the Hardy School by 2030, and that's based on the useful life of the equipment in that building. We have spoken, or I have spoken, and Mr. Feeney has spoken to the Capital Planning Committee about the cost of decarbonizing our schools. It is substantial, and so we have been encouraged to apply for all grants available to us, and that's what we're doing with this MSBA Accelerated Repair Program. So, the new program has a two-year cycle, which I think is a change for previous years, it was, it used to be annual, but that just means that we really need to take advantage of it this year if we're going to achieve that 2030 goal for the Hardy School. So, with that, the board and the school committee have to authorize the superintendent to apply for that, that program is how it works, and I'll hand it over.
All right, next slide, please. So, the Accelerated Repair Program was established in 2012. It's the successor program to the Green Repair Program, which is also an MSBA program. It focuses on existing, preserving existing school buildings and major building systems within those buildings. It's distinct from MSBA's core program, which is essentially a school, like a full renovation or rebuild program. This is funded through a separate channel and distinctly different from that. So, any potential applications for a core program for the Odysseum would not be jeopardized by applying for this. In this cycle, there's $250 million set aside for the Accelerated Repair Program, which includes heat pump conversions. Awards made this fall will be for projects to start during 2026, so it really speeds up the process. You are assigned a project manager and an architect. It makes the procurement of those vendors that are required by state law to be a part of these projects. It streamlines that and moves much quicker. If invited, we would have 90 days to fund the feasibility portion. It's anticipated this would cost somewhere in the $50,000 to $100,000 range. We don't have exact data, because this is a new program that the MSBA is embarking on, which would allow for electrification, which is pretty exciting. Also, the reimbursement rate for these projects really makes the value of them very good. In 2024, for Arlington, that would have been 43%, so we would get very good value on our money if this is a, for illustrative purposes, if it was a $10 million project, that'd be $4.3 million, come back to the town in the form of a grant. Next slide, please. So, the Hardy Project would, it would replace a 2002 natural gas boiler, which is what currently heats the school. It would replace it with electric heat pumps that would both heat and cool the school, so provide air conditioning to some areas that may not have it already. Independent Accelerated Repair feasibility study would determine what system we ultimately would need and what the MSBA would be willing to participate on. We have done feasibility studies. Talia was very much involved with over the last couple of years. They provided cost estimates in a $5 to $8 million range for this location. For the lifetime, the cost of all system components, replacing and operating, costs $9 million, so there is some advantages to replacing, to electrifying. The energy reduction, we have some plans currently on the capital, the town's capital budget and program, assuming they're approved at town meeting this year, which will include a roof replacement, a full envelope replacement, which is a very large project, and a solar array at the school. So, in short time, this could become sort of a showpiece for the town. It is currently one of our, we'll call it, one of our worst offenders for energy consumption, and all of these investments that we're making could really flip the table there. So, next slide, please. Again, what we're looking for, the school committee has already voted to approve this request. We're looking for approval from the Select Board tonight, and pending authorization, we, the two of us, Talia's doing most of the work, to be honest, would be submitting the SOI on behalf of the superintendent by this Friday. So, thank you for your time. We'll take any questions.
Thank you, and I introduce Mr. McGee in his title. Ms. Fox is the town's Sustainability Manager within the Planning and Community Development Department, so thank you for that presentation. Before I turn it to members, this is really necessary for the Hardy School, but listening to this... but listening to this, it really makes me feel old, because my oldest was at the Hardy School when it first opened, following the renovations, and was going into the third grade when the renovation was complete, and at that time, it was a big deal that, that there had been a conversion from oil to gas to heat the building. So you can see what, what has happened in that intervening time, but also that, what the cost of replacement, necessary replacement, but that, that whole building was about a $13 million project to do the whole building back in the early 2000s. So with that, I will turn to board members, and Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hardy, my stomping grounds, that's where I started out. First, I'd like to make a motion that the select board authorize the superintendent of schools to submit an SOI, a statement of interest for the MSBA Massachusetts School Building Authority to the ARP accelerated repair program. So I think that's the proper motion, right? Okay. And then I want to thank Ms. Fox and Mr. McGee for all the work on this, and I know you'll probably pass back and forth, as you have done tonight, who's doing more of each of the jobs, but I know it's another thing on your plate, and I'm very encouraged to hear that this is going to be a stepping stone going forward, but it's going to be more work for, for both of you and others, and thank you in advance for that. And just to put something out on the table, as we are embarking on this, and, and I understand from the remarks under the ARP program, one of the benefits is not only identifying, but procuring the vendors necessary to do this work and get it done as most expeditious, quickest, safest manner possible, but also, I don't know if going through that process where this is so brand-new, it also would identify to the town new grants that come on the horizon, so we can take advantage of that, or if that's yet something else that you all are going to have to start from ground zero, from scratch, and, and go out and do that. So that's just for that. And then I would add, and I'm not saying this has to happen, and it's not something that I have direct control of, but if and when, and I don't want to jinx anything, we are successful in filling the facilities director position, if and when that happens, and when she or he starts that job, I would anticipate through the town manager and/or deputy town manager, perhaps just even initially, sort of some sort of report on all town and/or school-owned properties that don't comply, that, sort of what's in the queue, and, just, just so we're all aware of it as well as others, but, and, and I'm not a facilities director, but I did an awful lot of work like this when I worked for the phone company, so, and I would just put it out there, I don't know if that's something new for the facilities director to oversee with his or her staff, or if that's something that Mr. McGee, Ms. Fox, and others would be doing, but I just would be interested, I can see in the next year or two, questions coming up, you know, will this building be looked at, will we have to do this, how much is it? So, you know, perhaps by September, December, if the board could get sort of some report that's just a guesstimate estimate, you know, these are what we anticipate the town and school-owned properties are, this is where they would fall in the queue, you know, Hardy has a 2002 boiler, you may say Gibbs has a 2003, whatever, but I wouldn't expect any of that until the end of this year, if possible. If it's something that the manager determines, Mr. Feeney, that it's such a cumbersome and labor-intensive task, and there's a better, different way to do it, then that's fine too. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll happily second that, I mean, and I have a quick statement and a couple of short questions. So the statement is that I appreciate all the material that you provided, you know, on this agenda item, you know, and so, and I feel that I should be able to answer this question, I mean, from the material that you presented, and I tried a little bit, but you mentioned you'll be able to save me some, some money on what we spend on energy. Do you have a sense of how much we'll, we'll save? I know that, you know, prices go up and all, and it's hard to control, I mean, for any current costs, but, but with all that said, let's just say, I mean, we had them in place now, we had, need the heat pump system in place now, like what would be savings?
If, if I may.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think it, it depends. It depends in part on what system we would ultimately install at the school, whether it's an air source or a ground source heat pump. It will depend also what the, the costs are for electricity at the time. Typically, energy savings are, we see energy savings with introduction of heat pumps, but not always cost savings because of the, the price of natural gas relative to electricity right now. I, I think in the, the electrification master plan, that might have been one of the appendices to the memo, there is a, like a lifecycle cost assessment for the different options, for the business-as-usual case, for the air source option and the ground source option, and I don't have those numbers off the top of my head right now, but I think that would be the best place to, to see what the relative lifecycle costs of, of those different options are. So I think the answer is it depends, hopefully that gets at your question, and I'm happy also to discuss further, you know, those different options in that report, if you'd like.
That's fine, thanks. And actually, that's what I meant, was really the energy savings, not so much the cost. I know I said cost, but I was really interested in the energy savings and.
Yes, it's complicated by the fact that we'd be adding air conditioning to, you know, the 80% of the building that doesn't currently have any air conditioning, right? So, but, but, I mean, it's, heat pumps are a much more efficient way of cooling a building than window air conditioners, right? So we'd see some savings relative to, to sticking window units in the building, certainly on the cooling side, and, and on the heating side, it, it, heat pumps are a more efficient way of heating. There's a term, coefficient of performance, so if you look at the coefficients of performances, performance of, of boilers, gas boilers versus heat pumps, heat pumps are, are just more efficient ways of converting energy, yeah.
I just love it when people get nerdy, you know, with this stuffy, and, and also, I mean, along with savings, it's when you get more, you know, and so that's a, it's kind of like the, the opposite of save, well, it's not the opposite of savings, it's, it's another way of looking at savings. So if you're saying you're getting more bang for your buck, I mean, then that's definitely a plus too, to say that we're going to get, I mean, air conditioning, I mean, especially as we're getting more variation, you know, in extreme temperatures, you know, so that's good. So thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, very happy to support this, of course. So I just wanted to clarify, and I also, like Mr. Diggins, enjoyed the extensive materials and tried to find my answers, and realized that it's a wonderful thing to have experts on town staff who really understand this stuff. But from a financial point of view, and in terms of operating costs, I mean, I'm a strong supporter of electrifying for, for climate and fossil fuel reasons, but we need to look at sort of the, the cost as well. Do I understand that from a capital point of view, that, and especially if we can tell the lifecycle, that there would at least be a break even?
Yeah, based on the materials we've seen, the sort of extensive studies and that Talia has been a part of, that we've done on grants also, the lifecycle is break even or potentially even net positive. Again, it depends on a multitude of factors, but yes.
I think a complicating factor here is also that the business-as-usual option in a lot of these assessments is looking at whole cloth replacement of all parts of the HVAC system over the 20-year lifetime of, of the system, and, which is not necessarily the way we approach capital planning right now for, you know, if we're, if we're just replacing a boiler or RTU, a rooftop unit, you know, here and there. So it is a different way of, of approaching repairs, right, to HVAC systems that I think requires a little bit of a shift, right? So it's, while, you know, the, the upfront cost of, of the electrification versus the business-as-usual, it's roughly comparable, that business-as-usual case is taken into account, if you were to replace all parts of the system, which we're not necessarily doing all at once ever, right? So it's a little bit of a, a shift in how we, we plan.
Yeah, no, thank you, that's, that's a helpful, helpful nuance. And, you know, as, as you have said before, Mr. Diggins, and I know in other places, that, you know, operating costs are really subject to so many variables, the cost of the, of the utility, the mix of electricity and all this, but I was interested, and I noted in the memo, that, you know, there wasn't exploration of a ground source versus an air source. And my understanding, correct me if this is right or wrong, is that, you know, that in terms of operating costs, that the geothermal systems are significantly less expensive to operate?
My, that's my understanding. I, I was on a call recently where, where the consultant for our decarbonization study at the Thompson School was actually suggesting that, that air source heat pumps are, are getting even more efficient, and so that difference might not be as substantial as maybe it used to be in the past, but yes, typically, I've, I've seen that ground source heat pumps are costing less to operate, and the upfront incentives for the ground source are much more substantial, granted, the cost of the ground source upfront is much more substantial, but, so, so there's, yeah, there's a lot of factors there. But I think for the Hardy School, ground source could be complicated, because all of the wells would have to be drilled on the parking lot, which is, you know, we can repave parking lots, but it, it's a tighter area, and there's not like a field next door that's very convenient.
Is that, yeah, and is that, is that a one-time disruption, or is, or is there ongoing maintenance associated with the wells that could be an issue with, with that kind of type of thing?
My, my understanding is it's really a one-time disruption when it's installed, and then those systems typically last in the 50-year range, maybe longer, but that's, yeah, that's my understanding, is it's just really that initial disruption.
Sure. And, and I noticed also that the MSBA will do its own assessment of that question and others, before we make a decision.
Right, right. That's, that's a real benefit of this program, I think, is that they, they do that assessment as well.
Thank you so much for your work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Yeah, no, thank you for the presentation, and just one or two questions. On, assuming this is approved, and then we move forward to the project, you'd estimated $5 to $8 million. This grant program is a reimbursement program, not, so the town would have to find the source of funds, and then hopefully it's no lower than 43% as a, a few years from now, based, based on the past experience, is that right?
That's right, it's a reimbursement program, so we would need to, so the funding would come in two separate appropriations. Feasibility, which I noted earlier, would be guesstimating in the $50,000 to $100,000 range. We would need to come up with those funds within 90 days of being invited into the program, which, if it were to happen, would be in the fall, the MSBA's fall board meeting. They meet quarterly. And then, once feasibility is completed, once that phase is done within the program, we would then have another, we arrive at another decision point, whether to fund, to proceed forward and fund the full program, which then we would have the estimate on cost, which would be, you know, we're guessing in the $5 to $8 million range right now. The MSBA will come back as part of feasibility with a cost estimate with that. We would then have 12 months from that date to fund, to fund that portion of the project. That would likely come through just a town meeting appropriation of some sort.
Okay, thank you, and.
May I add, because I think it answers Mrs. Mahan's question about the grants as well. There are grants available that could supplement, could supplement this, so perhaps it would, if we were to secure either a Climate Leader Communities Grant, which is part of the reason we passed that decarbonization roadmap, right, is to get access to that, that $1 million grant amount through green communities, we could apply for that, we could apply for, there's going to be, I think it's called the Green School Works Grant through Mass CEC, which hopefully will be opening soon, so there could be a way also to lower that, that cost to, to the town, just based on the way that the grants would work, we could actually fund part of the project with those initially.
Great, thank you, and, and the comment, just happy to hear about air conditioning potentially being available, because that building in particular, the Brooks Ave side of the Hardy School, the upper floors, when you get to June, a couple of those classrooms, you can't even, they're, they're moving kids out of there as, as it gets closer to the end of the year, it's really unbearable, so, so that's, that's really good to hear. Okay, so on a motion by Mrs. Mahan to authorize the superintendent to submit the statement of interest, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's an affirmative vote. Thank you very much for the presentation, all your good work finding a potential source of funds for this project.
Thank you very much.
Item 10, future select board meetings. So right now, we are due to meet on the 24th. We don't have a meeting for the 31st of March, that would only be if necessary, I don't think it will be necessary. We will be meeting on April 7th, that's locked in, because we have to have our organizational meeting following the election. And then it gets a little tricky in terms of what we do after that. If we didn't have to meet on the 7th, I probably would have said, let's wait until the 14th, but it, it, we have to have that first meeting, so we wanted to talk to board members, for April, depending on how things go, the 7th, we may not have to meet again until the 28th. I, I just don't know, so I wanted to see what people, what, what your schedules look like. And the 28th is the first night of town meeting, so we will meet going forward from that point. So we can wait until the 7th and see if there's anything in the meantime, but we run into difficulties the week of the 21st, because it's Patriots Day, that Monday, it's a school vacation week as well, and I'm not sure there's going to be much to do on the 14th, two weeks in a row, having, having met on the 7th. So any thoughts on that, or, Mr. Diggins?
Well, I would say we, we, we could save the 16th just in case, you know, and, and I do have a question, I mean, about special town meeting, I mean, are we going to have a special?
No, no, not, unless something comes up, that's, we're not planning on having a special town meeting.
Because I thought that, I thought that the finance article, well, that, we did the budget, we didn't have a special town, no?
Mr. Feeney, I, I hadn't heard anything about that?
No indications yet that we need a special town meeting.
Okay, all right, you know, so, you know, I was just, I guess every time we've done town meetings since I've been on town meeting, I mean, we've had a special town meeting, and we did the, the budget, I thought, within the special town meeting, so, okay, and, so, all right, then that's not an issue, okay.
Okay, so, so for now, we'll do the 7th and the 28th. Keep the 16th, I don't think we have to say that's going to be meeting, but, and then we're into May, I mean, we're going to, again, be meeting through a town meeting, at least beforehand on, on Monday, so, Mr. Martin, did you have specific dates otherwise in mind for May, or?
No, I, just for.
Okay.
I figured we would probably do 5 and 19, but if we are meeting through town meeting, that would also be 12, the 26th is Memorial Day, so the board can't meet that time.
Yeah, okay, so maybe, maybe we put the 19th as a regular meeting of the board, and hopefully, town meeting will have concluded well before then. And, yeah, Mr. Helmut?
So, and did you say, forgive me, for, that you think we will not need the meeting for the 31st of March?
That's right.
Okay. Well, that, that's convenient, because I was very much looking forward to the, fully experiencing the Park Avenue safety forum, if possible.
Yeah.
Obviously, my priorities here, so.
And the thing is, we can do our final votes on, on April 7th. We don't, I was thinking, let's get everything done before, but we don't have to, so that's, I think it's highly likely we will not need a meeting on the 31st. Okay. All right, and then for June?
Can we just, just to make sure, so on May, we have one again?
So we're going to be going through town meeting, but we're going to schedule meeting, a regular meeting for the 19th.
Okay, so just that one, right, okay, fine.
And then for June, maybe it's the 9th and the 23rd? If that works.
Just as a comment, Juneteenth is the 19th, so we will have to post the meeting prior to that. So reference for board members and any of the public that would like to be on the 23rd meeting, we'll just have to post before, just the 19th is Juneteenth.
Okay, all right, no, thank you, Ms. Martin, and then, yeah, because I don't want to wait till the 30th in case there's action that we need to take before the end of the month. Okay, so with that, we don't need a vote or anything, we will just schedule that, and now we are on to Article 11, the warrant article hearings, our articles for review. Now, we already had the hearing on Article 9, so we will not be asking for public comment on that, but that was tabled. That is the bylaw, proposed bylaw amendment for observance of town employee holidays, and there's some questions that had come up, so I, hopefully those have been answered. I know at least two of the members had, had questions, so I will now turn to board members for any comments and/or motions.
Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong thing. Sorry.
Take your time.
I will say for Article 9, one of the things that I wanted to do and I didn't, which is my scheduling issue, was to speak to a few different town employees that I speak to, but having not done that, but taking into account that I didn't hear from them on their own, that that pretty much somewhat answers, answers the questions that I had on that. And I certainly would be interested to hear what the rest of my colleagues have to say, but I'm prepared to vote on that. but I'm prepared to vote on that.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And just for clarification, I think Mr. Feeney did confirm that where we have that situation where there's Saturday holiday, Friday town hall is closed, town hall would also close at four o'clock on the Thursday. Is that correct, Mr. Feeney?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to express my appreciation to Ms. Malloy and to Mr. Feeney for the, for the additional research and explanation in the new memo. It was extremely helpful to me. And I think I understand the rationale for choosing Friday with consistency with some of the labor contracts and consistency with federal practice and state practice, in maintaining consistency with public expectation and in, you know, other closures. So that, that seems good for me. And I, and I'm well aware, you know, even as one of the people who raised kind of a red flag or a yellow flag, yellow flag on this, that this is a relatively rare occurrence. So it's certainly not a hill that anyone should die on in either, either direction. And, and I also appreciate the rationale that you took the time, again, thank you, to kind of think through and go through, because I had asked you offline, well, what about codifying the Thursday night closure, just to really have an ironclad protection that we would give employees back those, those credit hours. And I think you laid out a good rationale for that. And I would like to invite you, just for the benefit of those listening, if you could maybe just summarize that. It was persuasive to me, but just, just kind of briefly go through that.
Mr. Feeney?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Helmut. And, you know, appreciated the opportunity to provide the board some additional information. Obviously, you did not have the benefit of this memorandum and the, the various instances where past practices occurred previously, so I appreciated the opportunity to provide some additional detail on that particular score. But with respect to your question, Mr. Helmut, is why we would not necessarily codify the treatment of Thursday, it just largely relates to the fact that our bylaws are, well, frankly, entirely inflexible and for good reason, because they are bylaws. And they do not presently prescribe for the treatment of business hours or employee hours. So that would not be a practice we would want to institute now, because it would unduly restrict both management and the board's ability to provide, you know, the best possible services at the best possible times to our residents. So really, it's to speak to holidays at sort of a global level for consistency, as you noted, but then to provide the flexibility, because there could be any number of unique circumstances that arise in a given year, really, you know, once every four or five years, that really are best going to be managed between the town's various employee unions, management, non-union employees, to make sure that the employees are getting exactly the benefit they want in that given year, based on where holidays fall.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense to me, too. I think it's, you know, that putting this in the bylaw would, as you say, is inflexible, which is not what the bylaw is for or does. And I got, I got this from your memo and from the supplemental materials that you demonstrated by history, that indeed what the town has done when this has happened is to close early on Thursday. And would you, would you anticipate if this would go forward, the next time this come around, that you would send out either a policy or memorandum or something, just communicating to employees what your intent would be for the practice on Thursdays?
So we would generally send out something at the beginning of each year to spell out for employees how holidays are going to be treated in a given year.
Good. Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. You know, like I said, it's, it's an occasional thing that comes up. I think that, you know, town, board members can keep, obviously keep observing what happens in the, in the years, but I have a lot of confidence that, that management will not short our employees of that time, you know, but that you do need to recognize and have the flexibility for unforeseen circumstances. So I'm happy to move favorable action.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut.
Second.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Any further comment? Seeing none. Okay, so an emotion for favorable action by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is unanimous vote. And next, we move on to Article 11, proposed bylaw or amendment regarding the Arlington Historical Commission inventory. The exact language of the article is to see if the town will vote to amend Title 6. Article 6 of the town bylaws to create a process for homeowners to remove their home from the town's historic structures inventory or take any action related there, too. This is a 10 registered voter article submitted by Lois Kaznicki, and she's here this evening to make a presentation, and I think also joining her is Mr. Yantar. So feel free to come up, and I think, do we have the presentation? I think we may have it available, so thank you for submitting that ahead of time and let us know what you're, what you're proposing here.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and attention to all the members of the select board, town manager, council, and administrator. I'm, my name is Lois Kaznicki. I'm a resident of 58 Bates Road. I've lived in Arlington since 2001. This is my wonderful husband, Dr. Timor Yantar, whom many of you already know. We've raised two daughters in this town, both at AHS, one's about to graduate. We, if you have it, we can bring up the slide. If not, I can. I see. Okay.
I've lost control over that display, so our apologies for turning up.
I can.
One of the problems of live television, but we'll, we'll get that remedied in a second.
Imagine the days when we didn't have all this.
We used to lay below trees. That's right.
Yeah.
The motion.
It's okay. I assume the motion is included in the documentation, the draft motion that Attorney Cunningham.
Next one down. No, next one down.
Sorry, my eyesight's not very great.
There we go.
Thank you, sorry.
That's fine, thank you.
All right.
Okay, we can go to the slide. Can, next slide, please. There we go. Our warrant article amendment proposes to correct some past mistakes, and by creating a process for homeowners to remove from the inventory their properties that, whose presence on that list is questionable. I think there's probably two ways in which things in that list are questionable. One is their over inclusion. A, some of the homes on the list are on there for features that are beyond the scope of the bylaw, which is for structures. So for example, one of the things cited on our home was its brick driveway. It's not part of the bylaw. There may be no, no description of any historical significance recorded in the register. And there may be features that are cited that are common to the rest of the surrounding area. And the other thing is, there was a period, we believe, of under enforcement or non-enforcement of the bylaw. I have, I've been told that for a couple of decades, ending in the middle of 2024, that inspectional services seldom referred permits for houses on the inventory to the historical commission, as was required by the bylaw. That seems to have abruptly changed in the middle of 2024, and that was our first inclination that our permits needed to be reviewed by the historic commission. Because during that period, many homes on the list had their features, the features that were recorded, had been removed or altered beyond recognition. So we believe that the town has an obligation to its homeowners and to the historical commission to provide a remedy for the situation. We think the remedy is, should be amended to the bylaw. A homeowner would be able to submit a petition to the historical commission to have their home removed from the list and would create a process for that. The process would mimic the established process for review of the permits whereby there would be, the homeowner would seek the, seek the time of the historic commission, would present their case, have a hearing, and the historical commission could provide their advice and knowledge and render a decision, and there would be a recorded reason for their decision. We do believe, and I just want to say this as a personal note, that I'm not anti-historical commission. I actually have a great deal of respect for Joanne Robinson, the current chair, and the other members of the historical commission. As part of this, Joanne and I do not agree on this amendment, but we did have a two-hour conversation about it, which was very cordial and informative, and ended with a hug. I really do respect their knowledge, but I also believe that homeowners are competent to understand the historical value, or not, of their own properties and should be a part of that process. Oh, yes. Timor's pointing out that this amendment does not apply to the town's historic districts. The historic districts are a different animal. They are governed by a different commission and a different set of laws. The inventory is under the jurisdiction of the historical commission, and so this would only apply to that. We, let's see, where are we now? I think we can go forward. Thank you. Petition process, there we go. As a matter of good government, I think making things clear in the law on how you get things, how things should work is a matter of good governance. And so we believe that we should create a process for the removal. The homeowner would submit an application for removal that would be included in the commission's regular business. A hearing would be scheduled, I think I already said some of this. Originally, we thought to appeal to the select board if the decision went against the homeowner, but on the advice of some, perhaps that's not really necessary. We, our intent here is not to overburden any particular committee or the select board, but merely to give homeowners some agency in this process. Thank you. The criteria for the petitions would be over inclusion. As I mentioned before, there are many reasons why some houses that are on, some houses are on the list that probably should not be. And for, during the non-enforcement period, features had been removed or altered and, you know, are gone. So there shouldn't be, they should no longer be on the inventory. Thank you. So we believe that amending the bylaw provides the remedy for the past mistakes and sort of the, for the natural fluctuations in the administration of the bylaw over time. And to its credit, but Kamau will also add that there are a lot of concerns around historic properties in the town of Arlington. I don't propose to speak on all of those, and nor do I want this amendment to speak to those things. I think the commission is well aware. I also think there's a bit of animus towards the commission, and you'll see sometimes in posts and social media, they get a little bit heated. I've publicly committed to defending the commission in those forums because I think we are all good neighbors and good partners, and we should behave, behave civilly towards one another. So my hope is that by establishing a process, we can lower the temperature that, by giving homeowners a little bit of agency over their own properties when it comes to whether their property should be on the list.
Thank you, Ms. Kaznicki. Dr. Yantar, did you want to add?
I'll just say that, Timor Yantar, 58 Bates Road, that we submitted a draft main motion, and we also submitted it to the town attorney for his review, and he's, as you know, done a revision of that for, for your review. He's also done a look into what existing precedent there may be, and if it's appropriate, I would like to invite the town attorney to, to speak to that.
Okay, yeah. And before I do that, I appreciate you addressing the, the appeal process, where it would go, because that was, I'll call it discrepancy between your presentation, what we'd received from Attorney Cunningham. I know there's been some dialogue, so I appreciate you going through that process and accepting that the historical commission may be the best place if we are so inclined. But with that, Attorney Cunningham, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that issue in terms of the appeal. Is that what you're asking for, Dr. Yantar?
Well, also, that there have been other towns where this has happened.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank Ms. Kaznicki and Dr. Yantar for involving the legal department early on in this process, working with legal department to come to a draft motion on this. They put a lot of work in and was happy to help them along with the process. Obviously, legal department takes no position on any of these matters, however, wanted to make sure this was something that was permissible under state law. In the end, conclude, concluded that if the town's so inclined, it is permissible. The town of Mendon has enacted a similar bylaw provision, providing for a procedural review process to remove houses from the inventory. That was done at their 2022 town meeting. It was approved by the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit without really any indication or any decision on that. It was just simply approved. But that's a clear indication to me that if the town is inclined to support this, that that is something that would likely pass. I did review the draft motion that was prepared by the proponents. I made some changes to it in terms of the provisions themselves. I think they're largely consistent. I also wanted to make sure we're in line with Mendon's action. They're not exactly the same as Mendon's either, but I think they capture the spirit of Mendon's actions. I think they capture appropriately, and the proponents can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they correct, they captured the intent and purpose of the proponents and their procedure absent the service of the select board as the appeal provision. I think that, in my view, that was something that was fraught with potential peril. I think it was, you know, we want to make sure that the historical commission, who's an expert on these matters, has, has some say in the appeal process. Obviously, if, and I would not want to put the board in a position to oversee that, and I think it would be potentially, create some potential problems if the board were to step into that role, which I was not in favor of. I do think that there, you know, if a homeowner remained aggrieved, there's certainly there are processes through which that homeowner could, could take a next step. If they were, if they went through the appeal and the appeal was denied, I'll leave it at that. But there, you know, in general, I think this is a permissible path forward if the town is inclined to support it, or this board's inclined to support it, and then via, via the board to town meeting.
Thank you, Attorney Cunningham. Anything further with the presentation?
No, I, I agree with his changes.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. So what I'll do, and we did this for the prior hearings, first we'll start with any questions or comments from board members. We will then have public comment. I believe there may be a representative from the historical commission that wishes to be heard, and then we will open up if there's any public comments. I'll turn to board members if they have any questions. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the proponents for your, your presentation. Just a couple of further questions for Mr. Chair, perhaps to town council, about the issue of the appeal. And this is just for my education. Is there currently any kind of, of a formal appeal process for any other decisions by the historical commission in Arlington at this time?
Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. No, there is not.
And so, so you indicated there may be some other legal avenues, perhaps, you know, should there be a continuing disagreement, but nothing, nothing that's set in place. So if we were to create an appeal process here, that would be a new creation, a new process?
Correct. I mean, there is, thank you, Mr. Helmut, there is nothing in the bylaw currently that provides for an appeal process. There's no recourse. Obviously, whatever remedies a resident might seek that are beyond the bylaw and not contained in that bylaw remain, they exist now, and they would, they would continue to exist if this bylaw were amended.
Understood. I think it's my, except for the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Any further questions? Okay. Yeah, so at this point, I think the representatives of the historical commission might like to come up. If there are questions, we'll call you back, but thank you for the, for the presentation. And at this point, if the historical commission would like to comment, please come up.
Do you know there?
Oh, if you can actually just further the microphone there.
Yeah. I just wanted to ask if Michael Gervais, who's another one of our members, was going to attend remotely?
He is, yes. I see his hand raised.
Because he, he was going to speak first.
Okay. Oh, yeah, actually, if you'd like to do that, we certainly can do that. We can promote him and.
Yeah, I'll promote him now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, by promoting, we're just giving the ability through Zoom to address the meeting.
There's no salary increase or anything.
I don't want your promotion either, but.
He won't either, I'm sure.
Just takes a minute for them to.
Thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't be there today. I would like to address some of the information that was presented today. I believe, and I think that I would also believe with the, with the fellow commissioners, Arlington really doesn't need this. Any property owner can come before the commission and make a Any property owner can come before the commission and make a case that the home should not be on the inventory because it doesn't meet criteria. The commission has actually done this in the past. As an example, maybe a property has been hurt, damaged by the weather, or it could have been damaged in the past because of past building department didn't necessarily follow the rules that they could have. And this was brought up with just, just recently, too, during the presentation, when we had the, this happened a lot prior to our current building, building, head of building department. But, and we know who that was necessarily, who it followed, that they didn't have to follow the exact rules. So now, we were always fighting, we're trying to find if anyone had actually come in and done something to a house. Yes, unfortunately, but they shouldn't have had the permission to do so, but that was an oversight or a problem of the building department at the time. It is, it is unusual to have someone on the list wanting to be taken off the list. And I'm going to explain that because you had mentioned Mendon. Mendon is not necessarily probably a good comparison to Arlington. First of all, it's a much smaller town, and the percentage of historical properties in Mendon are at approximately 5% of all the properties in, per person in the town. We are down, we are at, we're only 3% in Arlington. And that 3% includes 1/3% that is in the Arlington Historical Districts Commission. And so therefore, we, we and Arlington Historic Commission, we are responsible for the remainder 2 and 2/3 of the percentage of the properties that are, we're trying to save in our inventory. Now, remember, we did not put the properties on the inventory. They were submitted, they were approved, and they went to the, they also went to the Massachusetts Historic Commission. So when you look at it, that also, the kind of properties we have that we are, we have on our list is also different than Mendon in that they had, they have a more of an older period. We have a more of a spread out period. Arlington's homes are a, a sample of various kinds of properties throughout the time of Arlington. So not only is it from the 1700s, we could also have something for the 1950s and 60s that are on it because it shows how Arlington has progressed. So therefore, some of the things on our inventory list are, it's just a different, we can't really compare it to Mendon as opposed to what we are here. And if, if we actually did do something like this, I think it would be, they would literally be able to de-list themselves if it wasn't for the fact of the commission as the only person that can stand up. And I, I appreciate very much that you think that we're all the most wonderful commissioners in, that there is, and we know everything about historic properties. We don't. We know the best that we can, and we try to do our best, but we are following exactly what the bylaw is asking us to do. So when we might be considered sometimes harsh, it's just because we're following what we've been, that we, that we would do. Otherwise, we'd be, we wouldn't be having the objectives of a meaningful historical preservation system that we have in Arlington. And we have to remember also that when we did, when this did start, which was about mostly in the 1970s, I mean, we had some properties that were on the national list, but then back in the 1970s, we started this, we started, became more robust, robust in choosing the properties that were on it. And again, we didn't choose it. This was brought up in front of the town was, they, it's become much more rigorous now, and they're looking at a lot more things when you get homes on the, on the market. So the houses that were put on in the 1970s were looked at very differently than the houses that were put on in the 1980s, in the 90s. So it was, we were looking at a little bit more of a list of the architectural and historical significant of a property. Now, our properties also, she mentioned something also about the driveway and things. Remember that the buildings, when you're on the historical list, it's the property. It's not the building only. So usually, it encompasses the property. So if the property was put on the list and it had a, an outhouse on it and a tool shed on it, they were also included in the inventory. So that's all part of what's included. What we're trying, what they were trying to do is preserve, preserve some of the history of our town. Now, by taking this option away, which, and putting it on, I think you're opening up a choice for a homeowner to go above what they, what they, they're going to move over what they are looking to accomplish with trying to just get their property on. Not all the properties were these big fancy mansions that were on Academy Street. No, some of them were actually raised ranches, some of them were little bungalows, some of them were little workman's cottages, some of them were tenement buildings. That was a purpose of keeping this on it, so it showed what the history of Arlington was. And it's becoming much more, I think even especially now, more important for us to try to preserve what Arlington is, especially since we're going into the 250-year anniversary of our country, and this is where the, this is where the first shots for shot was in Arlington. Now, if we open this up, I also believe, and I, again, I believe that the commission would stick with us on this. This is a choice that, of course, is totally up to the selectmen to decide if they want to continue this on to town meeting, of course. But if we do this, we might also be doing the same, could be said for changing the zoning laws, changing the housing laws, changing the schools. I mean, you could open up a whole bunch of different things that could be fought this way. And I don't think that is the, that was the reason why our, in the past, this was set up as a bylaw. It was to help protect our town and its integrity. And, and like I said before, I mean, we, we do, I know you're probably going to ask this, we have approximately 13, 13, well, we have 1,300 houses on the inventory. Remember, some of them are in the Historic Districts Commission, and some of them are in, the rest of them are put in underneath our jurisdiction. Now, not to make things complicated, but it is. The Historic District Commission doesn't govern over all of the districts. Some of the districts, as an example, Summer Street is a historic district area, but that's not covered on the Arlington Historic Districts. So it's something else to actually keep in mind, too, that you're, now you're pulling it, and you might be pulling into that part of it, too. So it's, it's just how everything is worded. It's just, I don't know if this is a good way to go. Maybe it is to have something more that they come in front of the commission. Now, the last thing I want to add is that the commission has been short-staffed. We've, we have a quorum of five, and we've been short two people for well over five years. And we're still managing to, to hold quite a few hearings a month. And when we add something that so many people might want to come on to this, and then we're going to be inundated with even more hearings, and with the current bylaws, if we don't, if we can't even get you on the list on a volunteer commission, that therefore, after 30 days, you can be off our list, that doesn't seem very right either. And I understand, I appreciate that the attorney took a look at this, and he wrote something up, and I'm glad that, I'm guessing Jim probably maybe helped him, too. This was, we just saw what was written up maybe two hours before the meeting today. So we really haven't had a chance for us on the commission to look this through, to just maybe give us some pointers that we might think might be helpful if this was to go on, too. So these, this is what I wanted to add to it, and I hope that you guys can keep us into consideration. We like serving, and we love saving the look of our town.
Thank you, Mr. Gervais. And this, would you like to address the meeting, too?
Thank you. I know we all feel passionate, passionately about this, and I, too, didn't know about this until this afternoon. I volunteer one day a week at Veterans Legal Services in Boston. I was in my office when this, you know, the revised warrant article came across my desk, so I left. But there may be things that I get wrong. I tend to like to be quite prepared, and I may be a little less than normal. I've been a commissioner for about 30 years. I have poor spatial ability, so I'm not the commissioner who tends to go and look at the houses. I tend to do a lot with, you know, what's fair, what the good policies are, things like that. I know, I, I've been through a little bit of the process with seeing a few things added to the inventory, and I know that it's a process where people with expertise look at the houses, they assess the houses, they then compile a package and give it, present it to the Mass Historical Commission. The Mass Historical Commission reviews the houses that are the candidates for inclusion, and they may well find some that don't make good candidates. The houses are not simply historical. It can be that somebody important lived there, or that there are design features that are unique to the house. And as Michael said, we try, we, we don't just have the mansions. You know, we want to show Arlington as what it was and what it is so that people remember that. I know that times change, and about maybe 15 or 20 years ago, what, at that time was Vision 2020, had a survey, and they asked what was, what were the most important things to the residents? And among the most important things were the historical houses. And I, I think what will happen if this warrant article comes through as it's written is we're going to lose a lot of that. I, because I've been a commissioner for 30 years, I am well aware that we had problems with inspectional services from time to time. But I can also say that during my entire 30 years there, we have held hearings almost every meeting. So we were getting things from inspectional services in addition to several, several of us driving around the town and noticing when, when a work was being done at the house. When someone comes before us, we, we treat people with respect, we listen carefully. Many of our hearings, you know, and often we have three to five hearings in a meeting, we'll be there till 11:00 at night. And, and we, you know, and we try to work with the homeowners to make corrections. And sometimes, what they have wanted to do originally is what they end up thinking, wait a minute, this isn't the best thing for this house. You know, it's not good to have, and, and, you know, I won't do well with details, but, you know, to have a very modern window on an old house. And so we, we, we use our time to try to get them, to educate them. We work with them, we have monitors. And at most, what happens, and this is why there hasn't really been an appeal process, I think, is that we have at most 12 months to delay the demolition of one of these properties from the time that they first filled in, fill in the application. So even if we're delayed in having a hearing or something, that 12 months is clicking down, and, and then they can do what they wish. And that's probably a reason that, you know, that the Historic Districts Commission, for example, which can say, no, no changes to the property permanently, they may get sued, and we tend not to because frankly, the 10, the 12-month clock is ticking down as we try to educate people. And we, we don't all that often have to use the 12-month rule. We, we usually resolve these matters, you know, with the homeowners appreciating our thoughts, and then sometimes coming before us again and asking for, you know, for, for more ideas and more opinions. I, I think it's, it's very dangerous to think of someone either being allowed to opt out, you know, again, like could happen with zoning. But the, the other issue for us is, we have, as I say now, three to five hearings with only five commissioners. If we were to have, you know, as is proposed here, 45 days for anybody who wanted to come to us and, and want a hearing, I don't think the commission would continue. I, I could not continue to work on the commission. I just, I don't have the time to do that. And the, the, actually, a couple of things. One thing is, we have, we are working with someone, we're, we're trying to get someone to help us with the inventory because none of us thinks it's perfect. It is good. Most of it is accurate, but, but yes, there are some changes that, you know, that have happened. But in order to change the inventory, we've recently had, you know, a respected expert tell us that her, her estimate is it's about $315 per property. That's a lot of money that's not what we have in the budget, but we still are planning to go forward. And we don't yet have figured out how we're going to do this in chunks because we keep, you know, we keep trying to do this. But it is, I, I think it's the idea that, that we would be absolutely inundated with people who may want to be off the list. And I, I know that, and again, I'm sorry, this is where my lack of preparation is showing. I know that there are many times when, if a house has been demolished, and let's say the property still is on the list, if we see that, we just say, you know, of course, do whatever you want because it, it's not our purview to, you know, to try to change a, a new building. So there are many things that are, there are some artifacts in the list that I think shouldn't be there, and yes, I would prefer to clean it up, and I would adore it if the finance committee could give us a better budget. I would absolutely adore it if you can drum up people to, you know, to be commissioners to add to us. I, I don't think we're a particularly sexy commission, I must admit. And we have not been able to get people to join. I don't know what else I've...
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry, at the beginning, just for the record, I didn't ask you to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no problem.
I'm sorry. I'm Pamela Meister, Precinct 2. Do you need my address?
No, that's fine. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Meister.
I'm so sorry.
No problem.
Hi, I'm Eric Stangy, also a longtime commissioner, 25 years and counting, something like that. I'm not going to take much time because I think both Michael and Pamela have made a lot of the most important points. I do want to thank you for the presentation because I think it was very balanced and very thought out, and I appreciate that. Because, you know, as Pamela was saying, we know the inventory needs updating, there's no question, needs revision. It was put together in the 70s and 80s. But this would be a kind of, you know, taking the sledgehammer to it, I'm afraid. And, and we, we don't have the time, we don't have the people power to do it. But we certainly would like to have some help. We have plans. We had talked with Mr. Feeney recently about getting a consultant to help, how can we pay for it, how can we use the little appropriation we have now, but, but parlay that into a CPA grant that would then allow us to get more help to get the inventory updated. So, you know, it's not that we don't recognize a need for some of these things, but, but I think this proposal, I mean, there's a reason why there's, as far as any of us know, only one other town in Massachusetts, Mendon, that's done this. And I called the State Historical Commission, they didn't know of any other towns that have put in place anything like an appeals process. Because that does kind of defeat the whole purpose of what town meeting passed in 1970. And, and, you know, the intention is, more than intention, I mean, the need is clear that to keep the historic fabric of Arlington, we have... that to keep the historic fabric of Arlington, we have to have this process. So that's, that's really all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I had said we'll have questions initially, but because this concerns the Historical Commission, I felt it was important to hear from the members. Now we can open it up to questions from board members, and then see if anybody from the public. But I would like, before I turn to board members, just a little clarification here, because we're not just talking about demolition delay. There, there, there are different reasons why people go before the Historical Commission doing anything involving the exterior of a home that's historically significant, right? Just, just want to clarify that, because if, all we're talking about is a demolition delay, that, that's a whole different story. But there, there are other instances, and, and I think that's what happened with Ms. Kesnicki, where arguably it was questionable whether they should have been on the inventory or not, they were doing work, I believe, in windows on their house, or, or in, in the front. And that would bring you before the Historical Commission, correct?
It's because demolition is defined as a change of over 20, of 25% or more of one of the outside sides of the house, not the back, but the front and the sides. So that's why a change in the windows, it can trigger demolition delay.
Okay, all right. But, but even short of that, is there, would, would a homeowner becoming?
They, they, we have informal hearings all the time, so they're not formal, they're not, there, it's really, if somebody wants to come to us, kind of, not off the record, but just to ask us for advice about something.
Okay.
So it doesn't have any, you know, it has no consequence to the homeowner, they're just, you know, hey, what do you think about using this type of window, or flagstones, or something like that?
Okay. Now, I just want to make clair, when you first brought up demolition, thinking like years ago, like St. Jerome's Church, for example.
Yes.
The rectory was deemed historically significant, it couldn't be torn, there was a demolition delay that was imposed on it. The church was not, the church was actually torn down and, and houses put up. So when I heard demolition, it's not the full demolition of the house you're talking about. People are going to come to you short of that, that's.
Our jurisdiction is triggered if it is 25% or more of, of a change to the side, not to the roof, you know, not, there are, there are some exceptions and things like that, and nothing on the inside. They can do whatever they want on the inside.
Okay, I just want that clarification. So now I'll turn to board members, if there are any questions, comments, we're not going to ask for motions at this point, but I'm seeing none. Oh, Mr. Helms, yeah.
I think, I think maybe my first question was misunderstanding your intended flow, so I.
Okay.
If I could have another, but the question.
Question, sure. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Is there a process, Mr. Chair, I'll leave it to you to decide maybe who best answers this, might, it might be Town Council, but is there a procedure now for removing a home from the inventory that, that's not initiated by the Historical Commission?
Not within the bylaw.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct, to my knowledge, so.
And, and, and does the, does the commission have its own process for evaluating or responding, if there was an informal process, to responding to, to people who might say, hey, you know, this never really should have been put on in the first place?
I, I believe we, we look certainly to see what, you know, why something is there, but, but no, we do not, you know, we, we have had homeowners who just, again, like zoning, who say, I don't, I, I don't want this. And, and for us, it's, you know, I'm sorry, but this is considered to be significant to the town, and all we're going to do is delay what you want by at most 12 months. So, so, you know, we try to work with people, but I, I can't say, and shouldn't say, and won't say, that, you know, if somebody just says, hey, I don't like the fact that I'm on the inventory, that's not enough.
Tony Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, kind of in response to Mr. Helms' question, and appreciation for the work that the commission does, and how the town of Arlington certainly is different from the town of Menden. The Menden's, Menden's bylaw required their commission, when they changed it, to conduct an annual review of their entire inventory and make changes as appropriate, as opposed to waiting for individual homeowners to come to them with an application. I did not include that as part of our draft motion, because of, I think that that would be a, a significant burden on the commission, I left that out. But to try and honor and respect the intent of the proponents, I did include the, the opportunity for individual homeowners to present and pursue applications to have their home property or building removed from that inventory. But I left out the, that piece of the Menden bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, thank you, Mr. Helms. And Mr. Diggins?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And also, maybe I'm back to Mr. Cunningham, perhaps. You said that not within the bylaw, is there a, a, a method for a homeowner to take or request to have their home taken off the inventory? What other remedy is there outside?
Tony Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Judicial review.
So, and this one is actually to the, the Historical Commission. You had mentioned that you would like to review the inventory, you feel that it's outdated, needs updating. You know, what's the barrier? How can we overcome, you know, how can we overcome that barrier?
Ms. Meister, or, Mr. Diggins?
Time and money. So those are, those are the barriers. You know, certainly the houses that are in the historic district, I think, you know, we will not get involved with. But for the others, it is, it is tedious. There are people who, you know, as I say, we're, we're trying to work with one person who said that for, on average, you know, for each property, she estimates about $315 per property. Some may be more, but, so it's, it's time and money. We have a, we have a limited budget, but we also, I think the five of us, you know, we, we would need outside help.
If I could just add a little bit more to that. So I think if we remove the historic district listings, it leaves about 900, between 900 and 950 structures. Some of those are very obvious, I mean, we can just go through the list and immediately say, yeah, that was, you know, that's a house from 1750, but there aren't very many of those. So the real challenge is to figure out how to take this list of 900-some structures and come up with a, a plan of, of how to prioritize the ones that we think, they are either areas that we think were probably not surveyed as well as they could have been back in the 70s, maybe it was done a little haphazardly or something, or try to pick out buildings that, just from our own personal knowledge of town, we might think need to be revisited. But, you know, whatever it is, it's, it's our time, we don't get paid, but, or somebody's money. I mean, the best way to do it would be to hire somebody who does this professionally, and they, at least for them to consult with us to help us come up with a plan, and, and that's the process we're in now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Diggins, anything further?
Yeah, I mean, because I'm really trying to tease out, I mean, how we can update things, I mean, in a way that is systematic, you know? So you, you, you said that the, the properties got on the inventory through a, through a process, you know? And so the process you described for getting it off, I mean, doesn't seem to have the same kind of rigor, I mean, for lack of a better word, as I imagine it took to get the properties on, I mean, and so, so I'm trying to understand what would be more of the process for getting it off? Because, I mean, I think money, we can solve, to a cer, to a certain extent, you know, we, we, if we, if we have it. Time is another one. I mean, it's like, if you just don't have the resources to do it, you know, and they're not gettable, you know, then, then that's another issue. And to a certain extent, I'm adding something else to the question, but more so, I just kind of wanted to understand, I mean, what is the, what is the process, I mean, that it takes to get it off, I mean, in a way that is systematic, and you say, hey, this is very defensible, we have like this checklist, I mean, and we've gone through the checklist, I mean, and, and now, it's not just that I like you, I'm taking it off, I mean, or I don't like you, and so, did you get the question?
I don't know. I suspect that part of the process would be to go to Mass Historic with what, you know, our expert or whomever has found. I think this will, I, I don't know this, but I, I assume this will have to be done in waves. You know, I don't, I, I think it would be too daunting to try to remove 900, and, and I, I think most, I, I personally think most of the 900 properties should be on the inventory. The ones that are, you know, that have been demolished, I think that is an easy fix. And as I say, it's not hurting a homeowner anyway, but, as far as I know. But anything else, I think what, what we need is, is someone who knows what they're doing to take a look at the property, and maybe it isn't historically significant, but it is architecturally significant.
Yeah, that, oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's it.
I was just going to say, that's the tricky part, is a house may look totally ordinary to us, to, to all of us, but it has some significance. And that's why we have to go back to what's called the MACRIS, Mass, I don't even know what it stands for, it's the State Registry of Historic Buildings. And that's where we find the inventory form with the research that was done back in the 70s and 80s that determined why it ended up on the list. But we have to look at each one of those to see why it got on the list in the first place.
This is Massachusetts Cultural Resource Information System.
Yeah, thank you. This is, Mr. Chair. Okay, thank, thank you. I, I have a couple of questions, and, and just, let, let's take the situation, Ms. Meister, you said, acknowledge the inventory may not be perfect, okay? So on your own, if you determine that a property isn't there, you have the ability to remove it from the, from the list, is that correct?
I'm not the technical person.
No, 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 the commission, when I say on your own, I don't mean you.
Yeah.
But I mean the Historical Commission.
I think what we would do is put a note.
Okay.
In the inventory, rather than just delete the line.
Okay.
But it, just as a point of interest, it can never, it will never be deleted from the state registry, no matter what.
Yeah, it's just for purposes of what someone has to do vis a vis the Historical Commission, if they have a project. I'll, I'll tell you what my concern is, and, and I, I see a situation here where you may, and, and again, I think we all have to accept, there may be some properties on, just based on what you said, that may not belong on the list. And, and the concern I have is that if you have a homeowner who isn't necessarily looking at a project, but sees their home on the list, they might say, well, wait a minute, I, I, I shouldn't be there, and, and it's still their burden to show you that it should be removed. But I, I'm concerned about the homeowner that has to wait until they actually need work done on the home, and then they have to go through this process, and then they have delays with contractors, and maybe they shouldn't have been there in the first place. And far better, in my mind, to come to you when they don't have anything pending on a property than, than when they do. So I'm, I'm sympathetic to the, to the person who has their property on the list, assuming they can make the case to have it removed. I'm also sympathetic to your situation here, where you say 45 days isn't enough, and, and I don't think it should be a year. Maybe there should be a procedure to extend that with the assent of a, of an applicant. But I, for myself, I, I think I'd like to see an appeal process before it becomes critical for the homeowner to do work. But I also think a constructive approval within 45 days may be too soon. And, and Mr. Gervais speculated that there wouldn't be that many people coming, we don't know until, if, you know, whether, whatever town meeting does, because some people, he felt, might want their properties on. Well, that's good, that, that's, that's less of a burden for, for you. But I, I feel like, just as a matter of process, if, if you find it, I, I don't think you should have to wait until you're doing your work. And, and maybe if the period, and you just said you saw the proposed bylaw earlier today, you know, even if it was 60, or, I, I hate to go outside 90 days, because I feel like that's, that's enough time, but it felt like if, if you got a little bit more time, that would satisfy your concern about timing. But I, I, I feel like the person who, and then maybe it's only three people, but that's three people that have to come before you, who shouldn't have to come before you. So I, I lean towards that, just to be honest with you. But if, if you could just address timing, like what, what type of timing do you think, if, assuming this went through, and it's speculation, because we don't know what's going to happen, but what do you think you'd need?
Well, I think that would depend on how.
Yeah, what the house is. It's not fair, because every case is different.
Yeah, going back to an earlier question, I think you asked Mr. DeCoursey, if somebody calls, and we often get a, a letter or a phone call or a phone message from somebody saying, my house is on the list, I need new windows, I don't know whether it's 25% or not, or often they don't even know about that 25% figure, they just say, I don't know what to do next. And what we try to do, and, you know, we are understaffed, so it's hard, but we try to respond pretty quickly to that homeowner, and someone, often Joanne Robinson, our co-chair, will go and look at the house and meet with the homeowner and make a determination. And many times, it's less than 25%. And they just say, well, we have no jurisdiction, go ahead. So, you know, it's not as if there isn't communication before.
No, on the scope of the job, but, but whether they even have to make that phone call, that's an initial threshold question. And, and unlike the zoning situation, if you're in a zoning district, you're, you've got to comply with the districts, I don't, I'm not sure that's a, the best analogy in terms of looking at the Historical Commission. So just a, a few questions on that. I'll now turn, if there's any members of the public who wish to be heard on this warrant article?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to close that portion of the hearing and, and come back to members if they wish to. You certainly can ask further questions, or I think we're at a point where discussion and/or motions. And Mr. Helms?
I'm trying to formulate, I mean, I have a question, I'm trying to formulate it. So, I, well, I, I, here's one way, I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyways. No one ends up in a property not knowing it's on the registry, right? It's not like you buy, because like here, with parking, sometimes, I mean, people, I mean, they buy a house, and it's like, oh, you can't do overnight parking, and they didn't know it, you know, but, but it's not like someone buys a property and don't know it's on.
I think there are people who have realtors who do not tell them that the house is on the inventory. You know, it, I, I think is not right for the Realtor to do that. The inventory itself is a public document, and it's on our website. But, but yes, there have been people, you know, who, let's say their families have been here for generations, that's, that's probably one of the more common things. And so maybe at some point, they knew, and then, or, or grandpa knew, or something like that. We have sent out letters before to every property owner, but that's certainly not every year, or I think even every five years. It's, I don't know if it's every 10 years or, or whatever, but it's, there are people who don't realize it.
Yeah, and often they learn when they go to get, pull a building permit, and the building inspector tells them. I mean, not often, but that's often how we hear from somebody.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
No, no, no.
I'm still, still formulating, so why don't you ask, because it may be the question that I would ask. And ask better.
I don't even know the question, no, I'm, okay. So what I'm hearing right now is, there's really not a process for a homeowner, or it's a nebulous process. And I'm also hearing the 45 days and, and the constraints of five commissioners and having two openings for the past five years. I guess I'll sort of back into that. Have we dropped the ball somehow? I'm just aware right now that we're down by two commissioners for the past five years, and I usually pride myself on knowing things like that. So I guess, and I don't know if that's a question to be answered tonight, but that's something I'd like to remedy. And, and maybe it's not for me, when I'm saying, ah, maybe it's not the select board. Who advertises for that? Is that the select board, or the town of Arlington through the select board? Does someone know the answer to that tonight, or can they get back to me?
Mr. Feeney?
I would just say that commission opening is advertised in the same manner that all board committee and commission vacancies are advertised. I will note that the commission themselves have done the hard work of trying to recruit some folks over the years, but in fact, Article 1 at times that requires commission members to be registered voters, as we discussed at a prior hearing, has proven. to be registered voters, as we discussed at a prior hearing, has prevent, has presented a hurdle on at least two occasions in recent memory of interested folks who we were not able to put forward for appointment, because they were not registered voters of the town of Arlington.
Okay, and then, on your question, were you putting out, positing, whatever, the forty-five day time clock, and if that's something that should be explored to sixty or ninety, or? I was just wondering.
Well, yeah, I, I, actually, as I look at the language here, I mean, it's not so much, I, I, I think there's two issues as I, as I look at this. I, I, I think it's when the hearing opens, okay? But it's really when you're gonna issue a decision, too, because you can open a hearing and then, and, and then basically say, okay, we're not ready, we'll continue the hearing. I, I, I think the, as I looked at it after I asked my question, the more critical issue is what happens at the close of the hearing, because right now, that's silent in terms of the time period, I think. So, to me, it's, I, I think there should be a period to open the hearing. You're, you're concerned about being able to address it, and so whether the hearing is continued, but I think we need some language that, on the backside, once you complete your hearing, how much time do you have to issue your decision? Attorney Cunningham, is there any timeframe on that?
I believe proposed Section G of the draft language addresses that. Notice of the commission's decision shall be mailed to the applicant homeowner within fourteen days of the conclusion of the hearing.
Okay, but, but, but nothing there in terms of if, if, if they fail to act within the fourteen days, it's not like the other language that you have a automatic approval, though?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, and I also note that the, I did, in the draft motion that I prepared as part of the materials for the board, it was thirty days amendam, I, I extended that to forty-five.
Okay, to, to open the hearing?
Yeah, to, to, to account for the commissions in giving them additional time. But it seems like, looking at the review of the, the commission's meeting records from two thousand twenty-four, they, they meet, they met twelve times last year, it's about once a month, so I thought it would be difficult to put the board, the commission in a, in a position where they, you know, they, they get an application the day after they.
Right.
You know, had their last meeting, and so they give them a little bit more time. But I appreciate the time part that the board's discussing right now, and how much time they have to set that hearing.
Yeah, okay, all right, yeah, so, I, and, and that actually, I was thinking about it after I asked the question. So, I, I, I think to me, it, it, it's really, since it's a timeframe at the end, I, I raised the issue about the forty-five days being a concern. I'm less concerned about you opening the hearing, I'm more concerned about when you complete the hearing and issue a decision. And it seems to me that you need to open the hearing within forty-five days, and maybe we need language in terms of when you need to close the hearing and issue the decision, because I think, again, we don't wanna put, if this happens, and I don't know if it's gonna happen, but we don't wanna put an applicant in a situation where they go to the hearing, and then a year later, they haven't gotten anything. I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but there, there should be something in, in, in the bylaw, and, and maybe, maybe we, we just see among members if they're favorably inclined to do this, because we don't, if they're not, then we don't, we don't address it. So, maybe address the concept, and then we can, if it's favorable, we can talk about timelines when we come back with, with a further vote. Uh, Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I appreciate you setting out that, that level of detail. This has been a really good discussion. This is, I mean, one thing that comes out of this is I really appreciate the good spirit that, I think both, I hate to say sides of this, I think different, both perspectives on this have brought. That's, that's inspirational, frankly, because that's how, that's how we should have these difficult discussions, in, in good faith. And I think that the, the proponents that came to this out of their legitimate experience and, and pain points, as we'd say in the business, business speak, and I, and I've been reminded tonight how much I appreciate the work of the historic commission. I, is, I was CPA chair for six or seven years and worked with Joanne, I learned to love historic preservation and understand its, and understand its value, and how much work that, that you all do. And I'm certainly sensitive to, to that burden. And I think what we're being asked tonight to, to think about as we make a recommendation of town meeting, is how to balance those needs. And that's really hard. I think that, I think it's fair to say that we don't, we can only speculate, if this were to pass, if this were to be set up, we'd only speculate what the workload would be like, you know? It's, we don't know, because we're not really sure what the quality of that, of that inventory looks like. And I know from past CPA work that that's been, you know, that that has been an, an expense in, in a project that's, you know, ongoing and is difficult. So, we don't, you know, we don't know. I think I do agree with Mr. De Corsi, that I'd like to see this process put in place, not without sensitivity to the impact this may have on our amazing volunteers in the commission, but I think because I feel that my superseding duty is to residents of the town who may lack recourse right now and need some recourse for circumstances like this. And I'm open to the chair, others, you know, coming up with language that might best enable the commission to do their work under this potential new requirement. But I would also note, too, that with the proponents, I think acknowledging that, that it's all right with them if we don't have a appeals process outside the, the commission, which I'm very relieved for, because I would not wanna put this body, first of all, to, in, in a role where we would be second guessing the expertise of, of the commission. But I think, you know, without that, the decision ultimately would still reside with the commission. So, the commission would still have the, have the ability to decline, you know, to decline that and, and to, to say, no, this, we think this was a good decision in the first place, and, and, you know, with respect, we need to keep, keep it on. So, I think the, really, for me, this is just providing the homeowner a formal opportunity to have some agency, to have a voice to ask. And it's asking and requiring the commission to be responsive to that, and, and I think the workload is a risk, but we don't really know what that's gonna be, and I think we could pay attention to how that works. I agree with Mrs. Mahan, that we can make more efforts to fill the vacancies to help with the workload. I did just check, the vacancy is posted on the town's committees and commissions openings page, and, and it's, and it's hard, I mean, volunteers, commission volunteers is what make this town work, and it's hard to get, hard to get enough good people. But I think if we, if we were to recommend this town meeting, if town meeting were to do, do this, I would feel an obligation to do what we can to assist the commission in, in carrying out this new mandate, if indeed becomes a workload that, that you need to help with. As for Mr. De Corsi's suggestion, I, I tend to agree. I think forty-five days sounds reasonable to open a hearing, and I would be, I would welcome, you know, suggestion for language for how we might specify the close of that hearing that would, that would similarly give, you know, give a reasonable protection to a homeowner that might be in a spot. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Helmut. Uh, Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm not hearing a motion, right? I mean, I'm kinda feeling emotion, but did I hear emotion?
You, you have not heard emotion.
Okay, okay, fine, fine.
You've heard the, the rumblings of one, correct?
Okay, got you, got you, because, I mean, I was, I, the, one thing that makes me feel comfortable going forward is that it does come back to the historical commission.
Right.
I had a, I had a pretty strong sense of how it was going, you know, as it started, but the historical, the historical realm is so far beyond my regular realm, I mean, that I didn't even know how to start approaching this, okay, in terms of doing research on my own beforehand. So, I was like, let's get to the hearing and see what comes out of this, and then I'll, you know, get a feel for either, you know, how to move forward or to ask for more time, you know? And so, I initially was gonna say, can we just table this for, for a week, so I, because now I have something to put my teeth into, you know, and, and can go and do, do some, research and, and have some idea of questions to ask and who to ask. But as you said, I mean, it's gonna come back, I mean, to the historical commission. So, to a certain extent, we have the status quo, I mean, just with a clock ticking when the appeal is put in place, and it's really a matter of whether you have the resources, you know, to deal, I mean, with that appeal. I mean, and I think as long as we can maybe build in some kind of safety valve, you know, I mean, so that, I mean, if we get a lot of appeals, I mean, or even if we don't get a lot, there's just not enough time to deal with it, we're not, you know, I mean, creating havoc, you know? So, so, like, if we can do that, you know, then, I mean, I'm fine with, with moving forwards with the rumble that I'm hearing. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Diggins. I'll, I'll offer a couple of the comments. I, I think we could get to a point if, if a member wants to bring a motion for favorable action. The analogy I see here is, is, we just saw, I just saw a process with the Conservation Commission, for example, where they have to open a hearing with a certain period. If, if they don't open the hearing, there's a constructive approval. Once they open the hearing, they can continue the hearing on their own for a certain period of time, or with the assent of the applicant. And there may be a situation here where someone comes before you, and you're asking questions, and they may not have enough information, and it's in their interest to continue it, too. So, I think, I think we may be able to mirror some language from the Conservation Commission, but once that hearing closes, again, Conservation Commission has twenty-one days after the hearing closes to issue a decision, or else it becomes an appealable event. Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The zoning board of appeals has a similar.
Okay.
Structure where they have a certain amount of time to open the hearing and then close it.
Yeah, so that feels to me like, and, and Attorney Cunningham, I, again, we don't have a motion yet, but if we maybe vote that type of procedure and then fill in the blanks on a final vote, would that be, be comfortable with that? And then coming back to us with input as, as well?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Is it twenty-one days or twenty-one business days? I'm not being a stickler, I'm just trying to do the math.
I think that's twenty-one days.
I believe it's twenty-one days, Mrs. Mahan.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? Yes.
So, as, as a further question, so that, that would be, and that model would be open within a certain number of days.
Right.
And then, and then what would be, would there be a definition for when it has to be closed unless the applicant were due assent?
Correct.
And what kind of period of time do we have now with the other processes?
I, Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Helmut, I believe that the amount of time that the zoning board of appeals has is a total of ninety days, from the date the hearing opens till when they are supposed to close it. This, that's statutory, it's not, not bylaw. That statute does permit the board and the applicant to, to come to an agreement and file that for an extension of time if they wanted to move beyond the ninety, but it has to be a joint agreement.
So, I think Mr. Corsi may be, may be suggesting that we do a fill in the blanks approach with, so I, I would, I would move favorable action, but with, with the following amendments to town council's recommended or suggested motion, that, that we would ask, ask for the final vote to come back with a structure, as discussed, where we'd have, as exists now, a, a period of days to be required to open the hearing, a period of time under which the hearing, a, a time limit for that, for that hearing unless the applicant agrees to, to go for it, for the hearing to be done, and then an appropriate period of time after the close of the hearing to issue a decision?
Yes.
Is that right to you?
Yes.
And I think that the specific numbers of that could be subject to continued feedback offline from interested parties.
Take that as a motion, is there a second? Okay, second, by Mr. Diggins, any further discussion? Okay, so, on a motion for favorable action with the additional information provided by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank, thank you, everybody. I thought this was a really good discussion, and I think we will continue to work through this, and, and, and again, as Mr. Helmut said, try to balance, balance things.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is Article Twenty, Acceptance of Legislation Clause Twenty-two I of General Laws, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five. This is an additional exemption at the local level for veterans. And I don't know if, is, do we have someone to present, okay, great. Yeah, and, and I believe our Veteran Services Director, Colonel McGovern is with us this evening.
Yeah, I'm here, Mr. Chair.
Yep, yep, good evening.
Would you like me to proceed?
Yeah, yeah, I did know if you would, thank you.
Okay. As I'm sure you're aware, back last August, two thousand twenty-four, the legislature passed the HERO Act to improve and enhance veteran services throughout the state. As part of that act, there were two provisions that are local options relating to local real estate tax exemptions. Twenty-two J and twenty-two I. What's been proposed by the town administration in this warrant article is to accept twenty-two I. The decision was made not to accept twenty-two J, really a decision that i- is necessary by the terms of, of the, of the language and the provision of the HERO Act. Twenty-two J for towns that are able to proceed with it would provide a hundred percent increase over the statutory floor for exemptions available to disabled veterans or, or their eligible dependents. There's a provision of Chapter Fifty-nine, which is the taxation provision of the general laws, Section Five C and a half, which the provision, twenty-two J in the HERO Act says that if a town is all, has already accepted Section Five C and a half, then it may not accept Section Twenty-two J. Section Five C and a half provides that cities and towns have a local option to provide increases comparable to the kind of an increase that is envisioned in Section Twenty-two J for the full range of categories of taxpayers who the town can exempt to one degree or another from real estate taxes. In Arlington's case, Arlington has generously provided veteran and non-veteran categories of taxpayers who state law offers tax exemptions, thirty percent increase. And so, since we already are providing this sort of an increase, and really don't see, for policy reasons and reasons of equity, and any reason to change, that all categories should get this kind of increase, the town is not recommending doing away with our acceptance of Section Five C and a half, which is what would be necessary to accept Section Twenty-two G of, J of the HERO Act. And I, I think all veterans, at least, I think, I think the great majority of veterans, I can't imagine any would think otherwise, that, you know, we should not be providing the, the increase of the floor in the tax exemption to non-veterans in order to accept a, a, an increase for veterans over and above that. What, the second provision that, that the town administration is urging the town to adopt, Section Twenty-two I, in contrast, brings the veterans' exemptions into alignment with cost of living increases that state law has already provided for non-veteran categories of tax exemption previous to the HERO Act. And what that does is it ties the annual increase in these real estate tax exemptions to the Consumer Price Index, so that it's, it's like any other cost of living provision in, in any sort of public benefit. And this, the town has calculated through the assessor's office, is my understanding, that it, it would be affordable, and, and that's relevant in the fact that, under Chapter Fifty-nine, these increases, which Arlington currently provides thirty percent, are not reimbursed by the, by the Commonwealth. Compared to the, the, the increase that is the statutory floor for these exemptions is reimbursed by the Commonwealth. is reimbursed by the Commonwealth. So the Veterans Service Office strongly urges, you know, the adoption, the acceptance of 22i to provide the veterans who are eligible for exemptions in Arlington, that cost of living increase. And again, these, these exemptions to, that are provided by the state law are not for all veterans. I think it's important to note that these are for disabled veterans at the, and it's, it's a, it's a graduated scale of severity of disability that, that these are on, and as you'll note in the town manager's memo there, one, two, three, four, five, six, six different graduated levels of specifically defined exemption for veterans who fall into categories on increasing severity of, of disability or for some, for their survivors, veterans who passed away in service. So, you know, it's, it's not a huge number of, of folks or big percentage of the town's population, but it is a, a group that certainly is worthy and nobody has ever disputed that. And in fact, the town has strongly supported this category with the 30% increase over the years and strongly urged that the select board favorably refer to the town meeting to, to adopt this cost of living provision. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Turn to board members, any questions? Okay, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this?
Seeing no answer.
Okay, I'll turn to the board for any motions. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to first move favorable action on Article 20 for adoption of Clause 22i. And I want to thank Colonel McGovern and, and the town manager and the information that it provided to all the board members, including from the Board of Assessors or Assessor Director Dana Mann, because it definitely delineates out exactly what, how this would work and what the impact would be. I do appreciate that it is staggered concerning the disability as well as I think it's also tied in there if your disability as a result of service impacts your employability. And so there's a lot of different terms defined in there. So to me, that has a framework and structure that is doable. And I appreciate that anytime the town of Arlington, through Colonel McGovern and others, sees an opportunity for our veterans, that we adequately research it and also take the extra steps out to say, this is how not only we apply this, but this is what it means and everything. If this does pass town meeting and goes through and is passed by the Attorney General, I think we're good to go from day one, thanks to the prep work, groundwork that's been done by Colonel McGovern and others. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Seconded. Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Helmoth. Any further? Okay, great. Okay, so in a motion for favorable action by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Helmoth, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous vote. Thank you for the presentation and for all the great work you do for the town as our Veteran Services Director.
You're very welcome. Thank you for saying it and thank you for the opportunity.
Sure. Next is Article 21, Acceptance of Legislation, Chapter 399 of the Acts of 2024. This is a warrant article that was submitted at, inserted at the request of the school committee. I don't, is there any member, is Mr. Schlickman going to be presenting?
Correct, yes.
Good evening, my friend.
Good evening, Mr. Schlickman.
Good evening, good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of our Article 21, which would merely enable us to accept the legislation that was passed early in January by the Mass Legislature that would permit the use of photo enforcement for school bus violations. Before I go on that detour, I just want to mention that we were talking about earlier in the meeting about the relationship between the school department and the traffic supervisors. My understanding is from 20, 25 years ago is that the reason why the traffic supervisors are employed by the school department and not the police department of the town side is for purposes of unemployment insurance in that if we hire them as a school year employee, we're not at risk for liability for unemployment insurance when they don't work in July and August. That said, they are supervised by the police department and we rely on the police department and town side regarding the number of traffic supervisors we have and where they're deployed. Now, obviously, after the accident on Oakland Avenue, I made a request of the superintendent who, in consultation with the police chief, came back with an answer.
Excuse me one, excuse me one second, Mr. Schlickman, Attorney Cunningham?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, and I apologize to Mr. Schlickman as well, but I think that because of where this is in the agenda, it's just not appropriate to address this topic at this time. I appreciate the background and information, it's just where we are in the meeting and where this was addressed earlier, it's just not the appropriate moment to, to deal with this issue.
Okay, thank, thank you. And we can, we can deal with that offline, Mr. Schlickman, but yeah, why don't, why don't we come back to Article 21?
Okay, well, we'll get back to Article 21 then. Salem and Peapody instituted a pilot program where they installed these kinds of cameras on their school buses. And over the past years, Peapody discovered over 3,400 violations passing their school buses. Now, obviously, Peapody's got a lot more geography than we do. We're only five square miles and we don't have a lot of busing, but still, it's a lot of violations. Peapody and Salem came to the Mass Association School Committee, asked for our support in terms of getting legislation passed, and it was enacted by the governor in early January. So we scrambled quickly to get a request to the select board to get on the warrant to accept Chapter 399 of the Acts of 2024. This is merely acceptance of the legislation. Town council has offered a reasonable and quality explanation as to what's going on here. We have not developed any plans. If this is accepted by the town, then we can consider going forward and working with the police chief and public safety folks to see if we want to proceed with doing this. But we can't even take step one without acceptance of Chapter 399. So that's why it's before us, it would go to town meeting, town meeting would accept the legislation, much like we do on many different pieces of legislation, then move forward so that we can then discuss how we would want to implement this.
Thank you very much. Turn to board members, any questions or comments at this time? Mr. Helmoth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question for how this would work down, down the road. With the acceptance of the legislation, that's the gateway to actually start exploring this, is it clear in the, in the statute who would need to sign off on an implementation plan? I'm thinking specifically that, you know, there's, there may be some shared responsibility with the school department and the, and the vehicles, but there's, select board certainly has traffic enforcement, some, some, some to do with traffic rules and orders. The town manager is, of course, directly responsible for the police department, so could, you could maybe just give us an idea of what we'd expect in terms of the decision making process by various official, town officials or, or boards?
Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Helmoth, for the question. It's not entirely clear from the statute, but this is, this is brand new. I think what's anticipated is that, as Mr. Schlickman correctly laid out, this would, if it's favorably reported from this board, goes to town meeting, if it's accepted there, it would then be required to go back to the school committee for a majority vote before it's formally put in place. I would think there'd be some discussion at that time regarding the enforcement. There are some provisions in the statute that talk about the limitations of what the video can be used for. It's exclusive to violations of the school. There's a certain limited amount of time, I think it's 30 days, that's prescribed by the statute for how long the video can be retained, which creates a formal public record schedule. So this wouldn't be something that people could utilize to try and use for any other purpose other than violations of the school bus statute. And they'd be working with the police department to provide video and then issue citations. This is, this is a, it's a citation issue, it's not a criminal matter.
Thank you for that elaboration, Mr. Helmoth.
Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, this is, I'd love to get in the weeds on this one, with respect to deterrence and costs and lots of things. I mean, but the, the point is, I mean, whether or not we're going to, I mean, vote favorable action on the adoption of the legislation, I mean, and I'm very much in favor of doing so, you know, so, but I know we're not at that point, but I've played my cards out.
Appreciate your comments. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard, seeing none? Okay, I think we are ready for motions at this point.
So I make a motion to move favorable action, I mean, on adoption of the legislation?
Seconded. Okay, motion for favorable action by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmoth, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
It's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Schlickman.
Thank you, my friends on the select board. We look forward to a quick resolution at town meeting.
I won't change my mind.
Okay, Article 46, Endorsement of Parking Benefit District Expenditures, Mr. Feeney?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before the board this evening for a vote of approval is the proposed fiscal year 26 budget that was approved by the Parking Advisory Committee last week. I will note this has also been transmitted to the Finance Committee as well as they report on this budget as well. So just to review things at a high level with regard to the revenue side of the equation, we are, again, budgeting as we often do, conservatively, looking like we're carrying about 85% of our last actual fiscal year, which was fiscal year 24. And then on the expenditure side, with regard to what I'll call ongoing operational costs, we are largely presenting a balanced budget, but there are two items where we've been building a healthy reserve in this parking budget and through the Parking Advisory Committee and from the various folks on that committee who have different constituencies have brought forward some considerations for larger one-time projects for which we would consider spending some of that surplus. So there's two things in particular that account for the proposed $260,000 deficit. The primary driver of that is, you'll see a line for $200,000 in the Russell Common Lot. This is work we've been hoping to, you know, get done over the past couple of years. Again, our engineering division is down three individuals, so we are pivoting to working with a landscape architect to generate some new designs for the Russell Common Lot, but that will target largely the landscaped areas around the perimeter and then at the dividing planting buffer between the parking lot and the row of townhouses. The existing landscaping is challenging to maintain at times unsightly, but serves to catch a lot of trash and debris. So we'd be looking at redesigning and reconstructing those landscaped areas, but also what I will call the parking lot islands that are currently, I believe, constructed with different types of bricks and there are trees that are failing to thrive in those situations. We'd be looking to reconstruct those islands with, you know, creating more favorable conditions to achieve more of a tree canopy in that area, which we are lacking for things like the farmer's market, and we would do that through structural soils, tree wells, but also instead of brick or other impervious masonry surface, we would look at something perhaps a bit more decorative, easier to maintain, but also some sort of pervious product like that which we've used in nearby Widmore Park around, that like sort of frames the old railroad tracks currently that would allow the, the water to percolate down into the soil to help not only with watering the trees, but also with stormwater recharge and reduced runoff. And then the other item of note is within the line of maintenance and operation expenditure for a multi-space meter kiosk replacement for just north of $60,000. There, that is a one-time expenditure to replace all the multi-space parking meter kiosks. I believe there are three at Russell Common, two at the railroad lot, and one at the library. User experience is not always great in terms of folks struggling to read the screens, but beyond that, the cost of maintaining those systems is reaching that sort of equilibrium or tipping point where, you know, at $10,000 to replace them, when a service call each time for these aging units is a couple thousand dollars to either replace the screen or the solar charger or the coin vault, there's a lot of things that are failing. We looked at it as an opportunity to say, well, why don't we make this one-time investment and try to reduce some of our operational maintenance overhead for some of these aging kiosks, but at the same time, try to provide a product that will have a better customer experience. So beyond that, really, many of the maintenance and operation expenditures are largely what we see year after year. The only other thing I, you know, excited about personally, so I'd want to call it out, is an increase to decorative lighting on a year-over-year basis. We currently do have a line item within the DPW general fund operating budget that has long supported the work in Widmore Park, adjacent to the Jefferson Cutter House and over by the Veterans Memorial Park. What we're hoping to do by having this money available through the parking benefit district is to support that current scope of work through the, the parking benefit district budget and then spread some of those general fund dollars to East Arlington and the Heights, areas of town that do not have the benefit of parking meters and the revenues from those meters being reinvested in the district. So they're just a way to sort of spread the wealth across our commercial corridor. So those are the things I wanted to call the board's attention to, but beyond that, I would request favorable action this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Feeney. Any questions from board members? Mr. Helmoth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This might be just a helpful practice for a question I suspect that may, that town manager may get at town meeting, and that is about the single space meters, which, as you know, are unpopular. I would include myself in that opinion, and I've tried to learn to, to use them and to see them in the sunlight, and I know, understand we've done the best we can with them. I also understand that you had nothing to do with that, bringing those particular meters in, so I think everybody here in the room is
Being these meters?
Is held, is held harmless. When would we expect their lifespan to be, to be such? They could be replaced with parking benefit district funds.
Can Mr. Helmoth help that along? No.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Helmoth, and I honestly do not know the answer to the question about what the, what the warranty or life expectancy is of the meters that were just replaced, but that is a, a valid question.
Yeah, well, you may hear it again in a few weeks at town meeting with, with passion.
Yes.
I think we'd be unanimous in that sentiment.
I think we would, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Helmoth. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, so I'm glad to hear about the, the plantings or you're going to deal with them in such a way that doesn't destroy my vision of what could happen in that area, you know? But as you deal with parking, you know, the parking lot, I was looking back at the warrant for last town meeting, and I guess if we're going to put maybe trees or something, maybe we could go with the solar trees, you know what I mean? You know, so that we're generating some power and then if we decide that we want to do something big there, we won't have to worry about taking out, you know, the trees with leaves, I mean, just, just brainstorming. And where was the line in here where you referred to about spending some of the surplus, I mean, in other parts of town?
What I was referring to is with regard to decorative lighting.
Okay, okay. All right, got you. Okay, you know, well, yeah, I support that, you know, and of course, I mean, definitely support, I mean, maybe the other districts doing something on their own, but that's not part of this, you know, but I think you know where I'm going on this, so that's a thing.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. And And I just have a question. This comes up, I've asked this before, but there's two people that raise this issue with me from time to time, and it's Peggy Metropolis and Officer Hogan. And the question is, I know there had been a shortage of funds for trash receptacles at Broadway Plaza, but I wonder, on the seasonal or on the plantings, is there any, anything in the plans for the edge of the plaza, as you're coming up Broadway to the plaza, open area there that, you know, it seems like it's in need of a buffer between the street and the plaza? And I know we had talked previously, and there may have been trash receptacles going there, but there was a shortage of funds, but I know there's planters where the old cap stand used to be, but I don't know, as part of this, if there's any talk about putting another one, just so it would prevent a vehicle from going into the plaza.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So that particular issue was not discussed in detail by the Parking Advisory Committee, but, and we did install an additional Big Belly container there last year, but the location you're talking about may well benefit from an additional planter, and that's something that we could look into further.
Great, thank you. All right, and before we move to vote, this, this one's a little different. We approve the operating and capital expenditures, and then we look for the endorsement by town, by the Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, and then it goes to town meeting for endorsement too. So, before I ask for any motions, I'll just want to see if there's any members of the public who wish to be heard. None in the chambers, but is anybody zoom?
Seeing no answers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I'll turn to board members.
Move favorable action.
Second. Okay. Motion for favorable action by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mrs. Mahan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now on to final votes and comments. So what we've done here, for Mrs. Mahan's benefit, because last week what we said is, we had a hold on a couple of these. We will have a further chance to review for final vote, final comments on the report. We wanted to go through as many articles, so if there's not a hold, we will vote, but it's still subject, if there's something we catch before the final report is issued, we can certainly come back. So, I will go down the list of articles, and unless there's a hold, I will continue. Mr. Helmut.
So I just want to point out that I need to recuse myself for Articles 13, 14, 15, 17, 18, and 19, so we can maybe do those in groups.
Sure, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay. So let's start, Article 6, Article 8, Article 12.
12?
Okay. Do you want to, do you have a comment now, or do you want to hold that for?
Well, I can comment now.
Sure.
Okay, you know, so, so it was on the age element of this, you know, and so I think the request to council was not communicated clearly by myself, you know, because the deal is that we wanted to make it clear that there are some town bodies, I mean, where we do have members that are, you know, under 18, you know? So one in particular is the Young Arlington Collaborative, and I think the Rainbow Commission is kind of ambiguous on that. It says that the school committee can recommend, you know, appoint appropriate members for it, and I know that there have been, for at least a couple of years, I mean, when I first was the liaison, a member from the high school, and so what I wanted to do was clarify, I mean, under what circumstances we could have members, I mean, on town bodies, I mean, that were under 18. What you added, I mean, was a clause saying that, I mean, members must be, I mean, the age of majority, so I think with that there, I mean, any town body that has someone that's under 18 is going to go, something's wrong here, right? I mean, if I'm understanding the thrust of, or the intent of that clause, Mr. Chair, do...
Yeah, I'm just looking at it now. So you're talking about the actual language as opposed to the comment?
On the actual language, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I have to scroll down past the...
Okay, all right, I see what you're saying. Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, it's not in the section.
Are you saying that, because I'm not 100% up to speed, but close, that under definitions number four doesn't cover, it needs more language, or does number four, members of a committee where it says, unless the vote otherwise specifies?
Yeah, I think Attorney Cunningham wanted to clarify.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Diggins. I think that that could use some clarification and some, in accordance with Mr. Diggins' comments, and I could bring that back for the board's consideration next week.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, because it's the but in any event.
It's the default that we're trying to define here. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and to be clear for me, my reading of it is that, that's, it's not that it's a default, I mean, it's like a mandate, I mean, that...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, the, no, exactly. Unless the vote otherwise specifies, it's a resident of majority, but there can be a committee, just as you said, that could have someone under the age of majority, yeah, that would, and I think Attorney Cunningham, that that will be clarified for the next vote.
Okay, thank you. Agreed, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair, and just before we vote, I want to express appreciation to council for the further explication as I requested before, Article 6 and 8 vote comments.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Okay, so why don't we vote on Articles 6, 8, and 12 now, because we're going to lose Mr. Helmut for the other one, so...
Precedentally, before we do that, could I ask for, as part of the vote, to move favorable action, 6, 8, and 12, is that what you just said?
That's right.
And that I be registered as, in the affirmative, moving favorable action on those?
Certainly, okay.
And I did meet with Ms. Maher and had a brief conversation with the chair about what I have missed, so I'm pretty much up to speed on everything.
Totally. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, good. Attorney Cunningham?
And thank you, Mr. Chair, and the vote on Article 12 will be subject to revision.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, so on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, we are getting to the home rule legislation, so before I do that, I will turn to Mr. Helmut.
Mr. Chair, in accordance with the state ethics law, I need to recuse myself because for home rule petitions, I am employed by the Massachusetts Senate, so under conflict of interest, I need to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, we'll see you shortly. Aye.
And if I could...
Yes, I'll just wait one moment.
Just do the same thing.
Okay, Mrs. Mahan?
And similarly, on Articles 13, 14, 15, 17, 18, 19, recognizing that Article 18 was a 3-1 vote, and I did read both sides, if I could be registered as in the affirmative moving favorable action on those articles.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. So we'll have a motion on that. Is there any, any holds on any of them? Mr. Diggins?
On 18, you know, so on 18, in the comment, you know, it says, this, of course, discussed the potential implications of ranked choice voting with multi-seat races, which gave him pause and supported his vote against. I think it would be good if we explained a little bit what your, what your concerns were, you know? And I'd say that as someone, well, first off, I would like to at least recall what they are, I mean, so that I can explain it, because, you know, I mean, there are going to be discussions about it, and I would like to be able to voice, I mean, your concerns, you know? And I think, I mean, for someone who isn't going to talk to me, who's just going to read the report, I think it'd be good if they got some sense of what your concerns are, because they may have those concerns too, so I'd just like to give your argument, you know, more...
Sure. No, I appreciate that. I can confer with Attorney Cunningham. Back when we first did this, I supported ranked choice voting for a single-seat election. My issue is when there's more than one seat, and I have concerns about how the votes are reallocated and how the second vote, in some cases, your second vote doesn't get recorded, depending on who you voted for in the first instance. I can talk to Attorney Cunningham and put a little, and I don't want to expand too much, because I don't want to use up too much paper in the comment, but I'm happy to elaborate a little bit more, but I, and I will ask Attorney Cunningham to add that I do support it for one seat. It's just when you go to multiple seats, I think there are some issues, and that's really the problem I have with it.
Great, great, and if nothing else, I mean, you're refreshing my memory, so then I can explain that to folks myself.
Sure.
So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Diggins. Okay, so on, and did you second Mrs. Mahan's motion?
No, I didn't. I'll second it now.
Okay, great. So on a motion of favorable action to move forward with the final votes and comments on Articles 13, 14, 15, 17, 18 with additional language in the comment, and 19, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, I believe that does it. Mr. Helmut can return, not as long of a recess as he had the other night. Okay, now on to new business, Ms. Maher?
No new business, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, I just want to thank Mr. Helmut and his capacity, his day job, our legislative delegation representatives Rogers and Garbley and Senator Friedman for their work. Today, the House passed a bill to allow for the continuation of hybrid meetings, for remote meetings, that would extend through June of 2027. That bill is expected to be taken up by the Senate later this week for final passage. I note that the legislature continues to consider other bills that would make these provisions permanent. Those were not approved, but this temporary extension through '27 looks like it's going to pass legislation. We thank all those at the state who are working on this issue.
Thank you, Attorney Cunningham, and thank you, Mr. Helmut, for that update, and...
I had quite some credit for that one.
Mr. Feeney?
No new business.
Mr. Diggins?
A couple of things, you know, first, when you are looking into moving violation fines, if we could maybe also look into parking violation fines, especially overnight parking, you know, I think that might help us, you know, in our discussion, you know, next week, you know? And the second, you know, and stop me if I shouldn't discuss this, I, when we did the Mass Ave, name changed, I didn't say it then because of the kind of language issues, but it's also kind of like the heart of the problem for me with respect to the elements of the bylaws that we are not enforcing, you know? And so, in that story in particular, I mean, I talked to the town manager about this, you know, at the end of last year, I mean, the windows are pretty much covered with signage, you know? And they're not the only ones, you know, but it is, majority of businesses in East Arlington are playing by the rules. Personally, I don't have a problem with it. Personally, I prefer that we didn't have the bylaw, you know, but we do. And like I said, some businesses are playing by the rules, I mean, and others, for whatever reason, I mean, aren't, you know? And I just feel that we should kind of hit that, meet that face on and say, look, I mean, either we're going to enforce it, or we can't enforce it, and we do something with the bylaw, you know? So I kind of debated whether to bring this up tonight, because it wasn't reflected in the inspection forms, and that's a whole other issue in itself, I mean, and we had a long meeting ahead of us, and I wasn't quite sure how to bring it up without rubbing lots of people the wrong way, you know, and so I just figured I'd bring it up in new business and say, you know, let's think about it. We probably won't think about it again until closing in on the end of the year, but this was brought up, I mean, and I figured it would be an opportunity to at least, I mean, state my concern, I mean, a little more on the record. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Diggins. And Mrs. Mahan?
Well, I had two items of new business, but Attorney Cunningham covered one of them, so I'm happy with that. So my only other new business is just FYI that members of Save the L-Wife Brook requested a meeting with the council president, Judy Newfield, who after, and that was Kristin Anderson, David White, Jean Benson, David Stoff, et cetera. And then after that conversation with the Madam President, they were placed on the most recent Somerville City Council agenda. And that's monumental, because for years, 20-plus years, Mayor Curtatoni and previous councillors, regarding their one CSO outfall that's constantly in violation of the Clean Water Act and every other public health, state, federal, city ordinance, town bylaw, and basically has been ignored. This is the first time there's been some positive action, so they were placed on the agenda, had a very in-depth conversation back and forth about it. Don't know if it's necessarily because the mayor does have a contested seat, two city council members are running also for that seat, but take the W whatever way you can. So after they had the presentation and the comments, there was a unanimous vote, which was not expected, from our colleagues on the Somerville City Council, to support in order to have the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management discuss the Tannery-Brook CSO outfall with Somerville's Finance Committee. And that's a big win, and I just forwarded a whole big, long slate of information to the town manager a couple hours ago, so I know he hasn't had a chance to meet with that, to go over all that. And it's really just FYI background in terms of our ongoing CSO, but their next step will be, along with members of the council, meeting with members of the Somerville City Council, meeting with the Somerville Finance Committee, as well as their Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management, and also with their DPW director, who for years has been impossible to find entrée into that, and that has opened that up. So, I'm thankful to the members of Save the L-Wife from Arlington, as well as, there's a whole list of Somerville residents who signed on to this, attended the meeting with our friends from Arlington, and again, it's just an FYI, and we'll see where it goes, but I just wanted to report on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Helmut?
My only item of new business is to mention to the public the candidates' night tomorrow night in Arlington Town Hall for townwide offices, to wish our chair the best of luck. Hope you don't get too lonely staring up on the stage by yourself. And for the, for the candidates who are running a contested races for school committee and for the housing authority, hope all that goes well and that we show the public the good, the good time that that event always is. Town meeting members will also be available who are running in their races at 7:30, and I encourage the public to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut.
Is it tomorrow or Wednesday?
I, you know what, it is Wednesday.
Wednesday night.
Yeah, that's all I'm looking at your face. So, yeah, everything I said except for Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Yeah, and I just have two short pieces, more organizational. We are going to have the overnight parking discussion on for March 24th, and last Friday, I had a good meeting with Ms. Feeney, Attorney Cunningham, Ms. Maher, Mr. Mallard, and Attorney Munson, to discuss liquor license issues that related to our warrant article hearing, but also, you'll remember, we had a discussion previously about seat minimums for both beer and wine and all alcohol, and I think we'll have something to bring back to the board on the 24th on that as well. So I just wanted to let you know and thank everybody who attended that meeting. We had a very productive meeting. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Did you say you had two things?
Well, the first thing was overnight parking.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. I've zoned out on, that was the only time tonight I've zoned out. I'm basically overnight parking. Move to adjourn, sorry.
Okay. Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Helmut. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Ooh.